All right. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the June 20, 2019 budget hearings for the Santa Cruz County. We are going to today focus on public safety and justice, and we have a presentation on those categories as provided in the proposed budget on pages 317 through 319 and outlined in a memorandum of the CIO. And Ms. Maori, do you want to give us a quick overview?
Yes, please. Good morning, Chair Coonerty and members of the board. Christina Maori, the county budget manager. I'm going to give you a brief overview of the public safety and justice departments and their budgets. Public safety and justice consists of the 911 Communication Center, Animal Control, the Contribution to Superior Court, County Fire Protection, District Attorney, Emergency Services, Grand Jury, Probation, Public Defender, and of course, the Sheriff Coroner. The total expenditures for public safety and justice are $158 million. This represents about 19% of the total county budgeted expenditures for fiscal year 1920 and is a 5% increase from the previous fiscal year, which is primarily the increase to cost to maintain current operations. This chart shows you the breakdown by each agency, and as you can see, the Sheriff Coroner represents about 54% of that. Here you'll see the expenditures for the next two years, broken down by type, salaries and benefits being the largest expenditure of over $100 million, and then, which supports over 588 positions, which includes an increase of nine and a half positions over the previous fiscal year, some of which your board has already added mid-year. Additional expenditures include services and supplies of $51 million and other charges of $6 million, and of course, a small amount for contingencies, which shows up in our county fire budget. Status quo increases are estimated for fiscal year 2021 and reflect an increase of about $7 million or a 4.5% increase over fiscal year 1920, and we'll update those for you in the following year. The revenues for public safety and justice consist of about $66 million or 42% of the total financing, with the General Fund and other funds making up the difference of 58% to support the expenditures. Public safety and justice revenues represent 8% of the total budgeted revenues in the county, and this chart shows the share of financing by department and agency. And note both that the animal services and the grand jury are not represented as they are totally supported by the General Fund. Here you'll see a breakdown of the next two years of the revenues by type. The largest, this type is $45 million in intergovernmental revenues, which is state and federal funding, $11 million for charges for services, $7 million in taxes, fines and assessments, and about $3 million in licenses and other financing. Additional financing includes about $89 million in general fund support and $2 million in other funds. Fiscal year 2021 revenues are estimated are relatively status quo at this time and will be updated when more information is available. So here you'll see a breakdown of the General Fund contribution by department and agency for a total of $90 million, which represents 54% of the total General Fund net cost, and further details are provided in each department budget proposal. So the total General Fund support for public safety is $90 million, and it represents 54% of the total General Fund net county cost. And there you'll see the Sheriff Coroner represents 60% of the public safety contribution. And of course, the public safety and justice departments contributed 23 objectives for the 1921 Operational Plan. Major projects include completion of the first year of the Focused Intervention Team Pilot Program, a feasibility study to apply restorative justice principles through a neighborhood court system, the completion of an accredited DNA lab, and a target to reduce recidivism among AB 109 clients by 15% over two years. The county works continuously internally and with our community partners to promote safety, reduce recidivism, and foster shared safety and opportunity. The opening of the Aptos Service Center and Probation Service Center bring new capacity online in service to the community in the form of better to community access and more efficient service delivery. Events such as the Human Trafficking Symposium, the Forum on Restorative Justice have shown light on important public safety issues, while bodies such as the Community Corrections Partnership and Task Force on Justice and Gender continue to work to transform these issues into policies and practices. From improving our emergency operations to serving as first responders, from finding homes to offering low-cost or free spay, neuter, and vaccine services for pets, from representing nearly 10,000 cases of the public defender and continuing to serve the needs of the AB 109 population, the public safety and justice departments serve and protect the citizens of Santa Cruz County. The largest of the public safety and justice departments will provide presentations on the regular agenda today. Status quo budget proposals are included on the consent agenda and include the 911 Communication Center, Animal Control Services, the Contribution to Superior Court, County Fire Protection.
Christina, sorry, we're just going to pause for a moment. Community TV is not getting our feed, and so we're just going to give it a moment to get us online.
That was the practice run.
Oh, okay. Oh, I get a do-over?
No. Are we, we're good? Okay. Feel free to continue from where you were.
From where I was. Okay. So the status quo budget proposals are included on the consent agenda today, include 911 Communications, Animal Control, Contribution to Superior Court, Emergency Services, Grand Jury, and the Public Defender. Department heads are available today to answer any questions, available for any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Maori? Okay, any comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. Should move on.
Sorry, to bring on, I'll bring it back to the board to move on to item number 45, which is action on the consent agenda. These are items 50 through 55 on today's agenda. First, I'll ask if there are any questions from board members around these items?
Yeah, I just wanted to, and a very important and ever-changing, it appears now, 911 Communication Center. I think it's a relief to see that Governor Newsom is proposing a budget that includes replacement of, a replacement of a funding mechanism for the 911 systems. The county general fund contribution shows that an increase of 641,000 from the prior years, more than 76% increase as people move using cell phones. Governor Brown tried to fix this situation, and now Governor Newsom is, in essence, would implement a, what, 43 cent per month charge on cell phones to pay for this system? Is that where we're going?
Yes. The governor's proposal will help the 911 system. However, it's mostly for capital improvements to the system, and it's not for ongoing operations. So the ongoing operations have increased by about $600,000 in our 911 center this year. Governor Newsom's proposal won't help that, but it will help in terms of making the system work better and give us more money for capital items. The costs are going up primarily due to a records management system consolidation that we are now participating in, so every public safety jurisdiction or every law enforcement agency, with the exception of Scotts Valley, will now be part of the same records management system, and it'll be much more effective as well. And then the other is just the rising costs of our calls for service. The number of calls have gone up in the, in the unincorporated area, so the combination of those two have risen, have caused the cost to go up. And then our revenue source, our own county 911V, the revenues have been going down because it's reliant on landlines and not on cell phones, and so that, our own revenue source has been declining over time.
Okay. Secondly, on emergency services, I just want to say thank you to Rosemary Anderson and her team for their hard work. We've had several meetings up in the Santa Rosa Valley in particular. She has made presentations about preparation and reaction should a catastrophic, catastrophic, my, that's easy, it's early, fire, earthquake, or whatever the case may be, and it's particularly of concern to people in the Santa Rosa Valley where there's not too much ability to go in and come out. And one thing is, just to prepare yourself, as the word has gone out, with food and clothing, water as much as you can, and even when you're going over to work on Highway 17, have a day or two of water or some items that could help you withstand maybe one or two days over the hill. So I, I just want to thank her for giving people that preparation and, or suggesting how to prepare well for that unlikely, I hope, occurrence, but it's really very important that we, we can't tell people exactly where they should go and when a disaster occurs because we don't know where it's going to be, where the fire might be, for instance, or something. So it's difficult to say this is where you should go, no matter what, but she has been excellent at doing that, and one of the things that the fire agencies have said is that if you are told to get out, get out, because if you don't get out, they can't get in, or it makes it much more difficult for them to do that, to perform the work that they need to do. But I just want to say how much I appreciate that, and the recent history we've had in California is quite frightening, but I think we're going to be better prepared, but I encourage people to get, be prepared for the unlikelihood of a disaster, of a fire, earthquake, or something of that nature.
Anything else to raise, Leopold?
I just want to comment on just two of the items on the consent agenda. First of all, our Animal Control Services, very happy with the work that they do. Not only are they very effective out in the field, but they've really turned the animal shelter into a great meeting space, building community with people who care about animals. They've hosted some great events, and I'm looking forward to this next year in terms of expansion, to see that, that work continue and grow at the 7th Avenue site, and the new benefit shop that's opened at 17th and Felt is also a great spot, and it's always cheery when I go in there, and I understand it's doing very well for the animal controls, for the animal shelter, and I just want to appreciate Melanie Sobel for her leadership in terms of making that all happen. It takes a lot of people to make the animal shelter go and Animal Control Services, but it takes a great leader to build community, and thank you for that. And also, I just want to follow up on the Office of Emergency Services. I went up to Sacramento along with Supervisor McPherson and Sheriff Hart and Rosemary Anderson to the Governor's Conference on Emergency Management Services to hear what other communities are doing around the state to prepare. And one thing that I came away with, away with, is there's still a lot we have to do, but we have, we have a really good plan in place. We have really good efforts to reach out to our rural neighborhoods, and we have a commitment to go out and do public education. And like my colleague, Ms. Anderson has, has participated in some educational events up in the summit area, and it's been very useful information that has been shared. And so I encourage everyone to sign up for the code RED and be prepared for the next disaster, because here in Santa Cruz, it will come, so.
Okay. Now's the time for the public to speak to us about these items. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I would move the consent agenda.
Motion by Leopold, second by McPherson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. We're now going to move on to item number 46, which is to consider the 2019-2021 proposed budgets for county fire protection as outlined in the reference budget documents, and schedule the continuing agreements list and amendments to the unified fee schedule for final approval on last-day budget hearings, June 25, 2019, as outlined in a memorandum of the CIO. Chief Larkin, welcome. Mr. Beaton, welcome back.
Good morning, Chair Coonerty, members of the board, Mr. Palacio. Ian Larkin, CalFire, County Fire, Fire Chief, I'm here to present to you, here.
Hold on, hold on.
We got too many fingers, too many fingers on the buttons here. I'm here to present to you our 2019 State of the State prior to entering into our budget presentation. I'm here seated at my right with General Services Director, Michael Beaton. So kind of setting the stage for what we're up against here in California, as we're all too aware, last year in 2018, we experienced one of the most devastating fire seasons in our history. It continues to burn larger and faster than we've ever seen before. So as we look into the future, we're going to discuss a few topics, such as the new normal, some items that are provided through predictive services that help us look at our outlook and predict what we have in store for us in the future. Our State of the State will cover some things about our water outlook moving into fire season, as well as our local impacts. In 2018, there were over 7,500 wildfires in the state of California that burned more than 1.8 million acres. That seems pretty extreme, but the staggering number here is that we lost over 22,700 structures were destroyed in those fires that burned 1.8 million acres. That continues to be a struggle throughout the wildland-urban interface. So as we move to the new norm, what has changed? We've experienced the five hottest years on record in California. Temperatures continue to go up as we see climate change progress. We're seeing more extreme variations in our precipitation throughout the state of California as well. Our red flag events or our offshore wind events are becoming more extreme and more frequent. We have legacy infrastructure in the wildland-urban face, as well as our buildings in the wildland- urban interface are built with non-WUU compliant construction due to their age. And our fire seasons are longer. On average, our fire seasons are one to two months longer than the norm. In addition, our vegetation and our fuels continue to change due to climate. So what I have here is just a, about a one-minute video. It's a progression time-lapse video of the campfire that occurred in Butte County last year. This fire burned approximately 90,000 acres in the first 24 hours. The campfire burned with such ferocity and speed that in the first 24 hours, first responders could not engage in firefighting activities, yet they had to concentrate specifically on evacuations and rescues of the public. Actually, you can see that's just the first 24 hours as that goes. It's about a one-minute video.
Where does that stretch, sir?
That's, that stretch is basically from the town of Megalia to Highway 99 near Chico.
What number acres would that be on?
It's about, it's about 90,000 acres in the first 24 hours. So as you look at the impacts of the new norm, some of the impacts, firefighters are not able to effectively engage in initial attack operations due to fire's intensity. They're burning hotter and faster than we've ever seen before. Due to fire intensity and how fast the fires are spreading, there's cause for mass rescues and evacuations, as well as casualties that occur with a fast-moving fire. We're having to call for evacuations much earlier than we would have had in the past to alert those residents much earlier in advance of those fast-moving fires. We're also seeing large resource order requests that are having to be made in order to get enough resources into the area to combat these large fires. They're also being committed for longer periods of time due to the mass devastation. Fires continue to burn with extreme fire behavior, fire behavior that we haven't seen ever. Due to those mass evacuations, as was mentioned earlier in one of the presentations, traffic congestion becomes a big condition that we have to deal with, with our coordination efforts of trying to get resources in and trying to get people out of the area. The biggest part of this is the vulnerable populations that we have in our communities. They are most at risk during these times. So as you can see this graph, the average acres that we're burning each year continues to rise every year. Our fires are getting larger and larger each year. As we look into the future and into the past, if we look at our mean acres burned, our historical data shows us from 1961 to 1990 that we had moderate activity, and that would be your slide on the left. As we look into the future, predictions are showing from 2070, I know this is way into the future, from 2070 to 2099, you can see the increases in activity statewide will be extreme. So as we look at our predictive services outlooks here, as you can see in the slide on the left-hand side, is our snowpack from 2017, and I'm doing a comparison here over three years. So 2017 versus 2018 on the right, you can see there was a significant reduction in our snowpack. But if you look at 18 versus 19, in 2019, we have a significant snowpack. Still, in 2017, we had significant fires, so the additional snowpack will obviously provide for ample water and growth in vegetation and supply us with water to fight fires. It does have other impacts with kill-off from the snowpack. And I just show this picture just to kind of give you another resonance of what the snowpack looks like. The upper-left hand is Half Dome in Yosemite in 2017 versus the right in 2018, and the lower-left is 2019 versus the lower-right is the 2018 comparison. So we do have a significant snowpack, which also creates additional issues with high-water flooding when we're coming into the middle of June, where we're talking about flooding. It's kind of crazy. So as we see over a period of time in April, our average snowfall actually increased as well. We were about 165% of our normal snowfall for that timeframe. Precipitation, as it started, start of our rainy season to April, we were above average for most of our areas, even though we received isolated periods of rain, concentrated rainfall, we still maintained an average to above-average rainfall for our area. Late rains have helped. As you can see, we're well above our rainfall averages for the months of February to April. We're about 90 to 110% of our above-average rainfall. But as we look at our fuel conditions, the drought still remains. Though it is lessening, it is not over. Late rains made it worse or better, depends on how you look at it. Late rains brought us more water, filled our reservoirs, but in turn, it actually created fuel for us. The grass crop is very plentiful, very tall. If you drive around the county, you can see there's areas where we have two-to-three-foot grass, which allows for fires to burn rapidly and move into the latter fuels, into our brush patches and things like that to carry fuel. As we look at our drought monitor, as you can see, the west coast in the month of April, we're looking pretty good with the exception of the far-south portion of the state, which is abnormally dry. And then our seasonal outlook as we look into the future up to July 31 of this year, as you can see, the west coast is kind of in that, just a state of influx. We're in good shape as the map predicts, but the drought still remains, and as we progress farther into the year, you'll see those potential outlooks change. Tree mortality, it's not a topic that we talk about greatly here on the very west side of the state of California, but it exists predominantly in the eastern side of the Sierras. But as you can see on this map, you're starting to see little speckles move west, and as that moves west, it's going to become a concern of ours here locally as well. So as we look at our fuel moistures, this graph just kind of gives you a depiction of what our fuel moistures look for the last three years, and these are averages based over a 19-year period, but, and if you look at 2018 versus 19, we're in a very similar trend. The 19 lines, the blue, and the 18 is the orange. So we are already seeing a significant drop off of that just due to the weather conditions we've had of late. As we talk about our energy release component, this is the amount of energy that a fire will give off. As you can see, once again, we're trending about the same as we were in 2018, even though we had that significant amount of rain. Our fuels did not absorb as much moisture as we would have hoped, which is indicative of the continued drought. So looking a little farther into the future with our potential outlooks, in the month of May, we're looking pretty good. We're about normal for our outlook for fire potential. As we move into June, as you can see, it'll increase throughout the state of California, more in the valley as the temperatures rise there. But as we move into July, you can see our potential outlook here in Santa Cruz County increases to above normal. So as it was mentioned earlier, we are not immune to wildfires here in the county. So our fire potential for April through May, it's been about normal, but as we move farther into the fire season, we will see, as depicted in the slides here, that that potential is going to grow substantially and put us above normal. So as we look at the State of the State, CalFire in the last two years has moved to a new staffing model. Our staffing models used to be regionally based, now they're statewide-based, and they've went to four levels of staffing. This provides for a more consistent staffing level across the state, but it also provides for more available resources earlier in the fire season statewide. Our fuel reduction projects, we continue to staff two state fire engines year-round that are committed solely to doing fuel reductions, both in San Mateo and Santa Cruz counties. CalFire has committed, they, in the governor's release of the budget, had committed to adding 13 fire engines to the state's already-existing 343 engines. San Mateo-Santa Cruz was a recipient of one of those engines, which we're very happy to increase our staffing to. That engine will also be staffed year-round and be available in the winter months for fuel reduction. Also, I just wanted to mention in the governor's 45-day report, I'm sure everybody's familiar with that, he identified 35 projects statewide that were a priority for the state to address. Fortunately for us, one of those projects was here in Santa Cruz County. It happens to be in Supervisor's Friends District. It'll be the Aptos Creek Truck Trail and Buzzard Lagoon, improving a fire break and fire road in that area. I just want to mention our Hollister Air Attack Base came online much earlier than normal this year. It came online April 15. Normally would not come online until June. All aircraft are available on base for response. One of the significant issues that we're seeing this year is we continue to see a reduced strength in our inmate crews with AB 109 and some other issues within Department of Corrections. Last year, we were forced to reduce our crew strengths from five inmate crews at Vinlemmon Camp to four. In recent, due to the inmate population being decreased again, we have dropped to three crews that are available. So we have a significant drawdown in our resource capability with our fire crews. But on a second flip side of that, the state has entered into agreements with the California Conservation Corps to start to upstaff some firefighter-hand crews, and we have listed here just the areas in the state where those crews are available. There's two to, two to three crews in each of those camps that are available to us, and it appears that we may be moving in that direction into the future. And just a quick note on early staffing, just in comparison, last year, we staffed engines on May 15. This year, even though we had late rains, we staffed engine here, engines here in Santa Cruz County and San Mateo on April 15. So we were approximately a month ahead of schedule. We went to peak last year on June 17, and this year, we'll go to peak on July 1. So we had a little bit of a delay in going to peak just with some of those late rains and fire activity. If you haven't heard, CalFire has entered, has been approved to purchase new helicopters. These new helicopters are a Sikorsky S70I Firehawk, which is basically a civilian version of a Blackhawk military version. These helicopters will increase our capacities and ability to fight fire. Their water tanks increased from the size of 370 gallons to over, right at 1,000 gallons of water per load, so they'll increase our capabilities and carry a larger crew. We expect to see these on fires this summer as they are, there's a three-year implementation phase. We spent most of the winter training our pilots on these new ships that will eventually have night-flying capabilities, which will be a significant increase to our capabilities here locally, because a lot of our fires start at night here. Also, CalFire has a C-130 platform that we will be increasing and adding to our fleet of current air tankers that we have that are S2s. CalFire has entered into an exclusive use contract for one C-130 this year to be utilized as a training platform. The federal government had seven C-130s that they were allocating to the US Forest Service that they had a change in heart and decided not to move forward with their program. Fortunately for us, we were able to secure those aircraft, and we're currently working through the contract. through the contract agreements for the aircraft, as well as training pilots and certifying these aircrafts to become air tankers. So as we look forward to our water outlook, with the late rains and the late snowpack that we have and the runoff that we'll have with the late snowmelt, we anticipate our reservoirs throughout the state of California and here locally to be full and plentiful. But as we draw those reservoirs down, we still have those concerns about available water for firefighting capabilities in those remote areas of the county. Looking at our local impacts, our state and local crews will likely see deployments that will be most likely more frequently and for longer durations. As well, we continue to use our local government partners statewide to augment the response to wildland fires throughout the state of California. And that concludes my state of the state. If you have any questions related to that, I'll be more than happy to take those now.
Great. Are there any questions?
Yeah, this, as Supervisor Leopold mentioned, the conference up in Sacramento was really telling and somewhat comforting in that the coordinated efforts and the teamwork that is going on between various agencies is very much realized throughout the state of California. I think there was, what, 450 people at this conference? And it's really something, I'm really pleased with the county fire that we've been able to buy the one sorely-needed replacement equipment for county fire. And I know that we're trying to, we're looking at some fuel breaks, a couple of them in Scotts Valley along the Sims, or the Lockwood Lane area, and then another one, that's about a mile long, and then another one about six miles, that is much more difficult to reach. But we, as we know, we're in the fire season now, and it's longer and it's more concerning for everybody. And I think the, we need to know, realize that county fire is, county fire is facing a structural deficit that we're trying to address at this point, and we'll probably get to that somewhat in more detail later. But I'm just pleased to be working with the county administrative office, county fire, CAL FIRE, the general services department, and emergency services. This team effort to prepare us as well as we can be prepared is going to pay huge dividends, but it's comforting somewhat, it is comforting to see the state making such a pronounced, shall we say, commitment to trying to prevent and to prepare us for response too. So I thank you for your efforts and the coordinated efforts we've had with the various agencies throughout this county and throughout the state.
Supervisor Caput, do you?
Yeah, I want to thank you for all you do also. And, you know, whatever we can do, I support anything for, you know, the fire department. Because what you, you don't, you're not even close to two-in, two-out, right?
Right now, our current staffing for CAL FIRE has three persons on every fire engine. So with the response of a chief officer and other resources, we can meet the two-in, two-out on the CAL FIRE side. The county fire side, it's a little different story, because we only staff a two-person staffing in the winter months.
Sure. And then when it comes to, how does it work with the Santa Cruz County Fire? That's a patch. How many actually were the old Santa Cruz County Fire Patch?
Well, all of our volunteers currently exhibit the new patch on all of our, on all of our personal protective equipment, as well as the uniforms that they wear. So we've branded the fire department and trying to, you know, get it out there for the public to have a better recognition of what the county fire department is. They're all wearing that patch.
That has a long history, and it's got a tradition to it, so. And then there's CAL FIRE, and then there's districts within our county. How does that separation work? I don't understand.
Well, so CAL FIRE is responsible for all the wildland areas in the SRA, the State Responsibility Areas. The county fire department has its jurisdiction, as well as the municipalities, as well as the independent fire districts within the county. There is SRA within the independent fire districts, and the SRA encompasses the vast majority of the county fire department as well. So that relationship is cooperative. We all, they all operate within their independent jurisdictions and budgets, but when an incident occurs, it's a mutual response to combat that incident, no matter if it's a structure fire, wildland fire, or any type of significant incident.
And then you have the overlap, I guess, with the cities. City of Watserville Fire, Santa Cruz Fire, they'll help out in an emergency, and yeah, that takes communication and a quick response.
Yes, our California mutual aid system is a very robust and strong mutual aid system. We also have auto aid agreements, where we've went ahead, ahead of time, and have written actually documents that provide what services and how that's going to be implemented way before the incident ever occurs. So our coordination efforts are strong and well-planned out here in this county.
And I'm not sure if you'd be familiar, but then there's Paharo Dunes, they have a special kind of a contractual fire department?
Yeah, so the Paharo Dune CSA4 is a contract through CAL FIRE, through a cooperative fire protection agreement.
You bet. Yeah. And I know some of the retired, I believe they're all CAL FIRE, Greg Estrada.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he's doing pretty good in retirement. And then I see Rick Noble.
Yep.
Yeah. He teaches my son, they have boxing for kids on, you know, Monday through Friday, so Rick's doing that. Anyway, I want to thank you for everything you do. And I guess the last question I'd have, when there's a big fire, okay, we had the Trabing Fire, I call it that, back, a few years back.
2009.
And then, of course, we all know about, or most of us know about, the big fire up in Butte County, and then also Paradise and everything like that. The biggest tension builder, of course, might be the actual fire, but is it the evacuation that you are most worried about? Because, you know, I, there's so many different things going on when something's out of control like that, and some of them are less critical than others.
You're absolutely correct. And life over property and environment is our number-one priority. So evacuations is going to be our key factor. And as I mentioned in my presentation, we are seeing, we're having to order these evacuations much earlier, based on the current conditions that we have and our history that we've seen on how fast fires are moving. Our wind events are extremely, wind is more pronounced and at higher velocities, which is pushing those fires more rapidly. So evacuation is our number-one key as, you know, life, preservation of life is our number-one priority.
You bet. And I want to thank you and may God bless all of you for everything you do.
Supervisor Leopold.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I think it's important for us to get this state-of-the-state presentation to understand the fire danger for this year, because, you know, we wake up this morning, there's puddles on the ground. We think that's good. We walk, we go by Lexington Reservoir, see it's filled up, and we think that we're safe. But when we look at the information here about the danger we have, especially in late part of the summer and early fall, we're at risk. And it's a good reminder for everyone to be prepared. We, I have a couple of questions. Yesterday, the Director of Public Works, when he came before us, talked about, talking with PG&E about changing the way in which we do some of our underground poles, which we have historically done in the urban areas to improve view sheds. But he's looking into possibly doing it up in the mountains or the rural areas on evacuation routes. And I wanted to get some sense from you, is, will that help? Is that a good investment?
Well, that's a good question. So undergrounding the power lines in an evacuation route doesn't eliminate the need for fuel reduction in those, because you need to have a safe corridor for people to traverse. And just by moving the power lines underground doesn't actually create solely a safe corridor. You still need to have that fuel reduction, because when a fire does move through there, it's going to consume whatever's in its path.
Sure.
So if we continue to have vegetation in those corridors, they wouldn't be safe for the public. So it does have some benefits, because a lot of those corridors are where some of our fires start. So we do have the benefit of that reduction. The cost verse, the cost ratio of it, if it's a, you know, cost prohibitive, is another question that obviously underground PG&E lines is very expensive, so.
Yeah.
But it could potentially have some benefits, but I don't know if they outweigh the reduction of the amount of fuel.
Yeah, it's a different budget to talk about of fuel reduction. And I know we're trying to build up our fire-safe councils to, and I know Chief Larkin, you participated in a meeting we had just two weekends ago, I think it was two weekends ago, with North Rodeo Gulch, a community that's concerned about fire, they're in that wooey.
Wilder, wild urban interface.
Wild urban interface. And they're concerned about fuel reduction. It looks like the Resource Conservation District, which is serving as our fire-safe council, will have some money to do some fuel reduction this year, which will be incredibly important. But it doesn't stop. That's something we have to do on a regular, ongoing basis.
Yeah, the maintenance of that fuel reduction is the key, is once you do it, you have to continue to maintain it. Otherwise, obviously, it just grows back and becomes a fire hazard again, so.
Yeah. Lastly, you talked about a project in the Aptos Hills about creating fire breaks, which I think is incredibly important. What kind of communication do you have with the CAL FIRE unit that represents Santa Clara County? Because I know that there's an effort to do a fuel break in the summit area. It would mainly be on the Santa Clara County side, and I'm wondering if there's coordination and support to make sure that that gets done as well.
Yes, so we have considerable coordination with the Santa Clara Unit, as the current unit chief there used to be my deputy chief. So we communicate very well, even in the past. So the units border each other and communicate very well on those projects. And the one you're referencing is the Highway 17 project, that'll basically do a fuel break from Redwood Estates to the summit. We coordinate those efforts. A lot of our inmate crews will probably be assisting in that, that reduction of fuels there. The goal is eventually to try to have that creep over into Santa Cruz County as we move forward and available funding comes available to us.
Yeah, well, I know it's incredibly important for the summit area residents who are constantly talking to me about ways in which they can reduce the fuel load, and some of them would like to return to what it was like 100 years ago, when it was orchards instead of forests, because of the extreme fire danger that's up there. So really appreciate the work, and I also appreciate that you and your staff are available for public meetings to talk with the public. And of course, I'm always impressed when, how quickly you guys are on the scene when we have a fire and are there to help people out. So thank you for that.
And I just want to add my appreciation of thanks. We've had residents from Bonny Dune who have actually come up, and they've asked us to enforce the code and cite them and their neighbors because of the fear of what they've seen statewide, and they see the trends. And I really appreciate you going up there and meeting with them and working with them. I think yesterday in parks, we talked about how, you know, the days of just sort of showing up and having government do everything are behind us, and people are coming together to partner. And I think some of our rural neighborhoods will be great partners in managing their own properties, and hopefully in a way that's preventative and reduce risk for all of us down the road. But I want to thank you for that, for meeting with them and doing outreach.
It might be a good opportunity to plug the CERT, you know, the, that really our rural neighborhoods should, it should get CERT certified, and the community emergency response teams, because that will help us out when we can't get there, that the community is already there.
Absolutely, yes. Now's an opportunity for members of the public to speak to us about this item. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward? Please line up.
Good morning, supervisors, and thank you. And thank you to Chief Larkin and all of his staff. I'm really pleased to hear you talk about the partnerships that we enjoy within this community, which really means the difference between whether we're successful during or after an event, is really about preparation and preparedness beforehand. And it's those partnerships within CAL FIRE, county fire, and also our district fire departments and law enforcement, that have really worked with my office and training and exercising together, creating stronger community emergency response teams and creating a new CERT council. CAL FIRE really participates very actively in that, in having staff that participates on that council and helps with our advisory. The same with the fire-safe council, which is growing in strength in education and preparedness out in our community, which is going to do great things for fuel reduction in the future. Highlighting Supervisor Coonerty, what we're looking at in terms of people being more resilient on their own, and that it isn't that someone's going to come in and save you, but more that we're educating people about how they can prepare and save themselves. And through our community education efforts, which have been really actively involving law enforcement, fire parks, and state parks and county parks, about how we can educate the public on ways that they can do that. So I just wanted to thank Chief Larkin for his support and his staff's support of the emergency operations services over the past four years that I've been in the job, and know that will continue to grow into the future. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
I'm confused. Are you going to hold the hearing on the budget itself, too? Okay.
Yes, we still have the budget presentation to continue.
Please.
Okay. So now I'll present you the Santa Cruz County Fire Protection Budget for fiscal year 2019 through 2021. I just want to point out a couple of things here. In 1948, the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors entered into a cooperative fire protection agreement with CAL FIRE, or then known as the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, to provide structural fire protection services in the rural area of Santa Cruz County. This partnership that was created, established the Santa Cruz County Fire Department and continues today. The county fire department's mission is to protect life, property, natural resources, and its citizens and visitors through effective emergency response, preparedness, and education, as well as prevention. So a quick overview of the county fire protection. The county fire protection is comprised of, excuse me, the county fire department, which is CSA 48, as well as CSA 4 Paharo Dunes. Separate funding for these two divisions of the county fire department, required by law to have their own budget, and may not use funds between the two budgets or those two divisions to fund each other. The county fire department budget is also incorporates some contributions to the Santa Cruz County Hazardous Materials Interagency Team, which is better referenced as Schmidt, and the Prop 172 pass-through funds, which are utilized by the Santa Cruz County Fire Chiefs Association. The Santa Cruz County Fire Department is responsible for structured fire protection, first responder medical services, technical rescues, vehicle accidents, hazardous materials response, public fire safety education, as well as fire marshal services, which also include the inspections of properties in the unincorporated area for building construction. The county fire protection responded last year to 2,348 calls for emergency response in the 2018 calendar year. 512 of those were fire-related. We responded to 820 medical emergencies, 250 vehicle collision accidents, and 766 other emergencies. And in those other emergencies include responses to hazardous materials, hazardous conditions such as power lines down, smoke checks, and as well as other assistance requested by the public. So the county fire department provides services from 10 fire stations, are primarily made up of volunteers, that make up the bulk of our staffing for CSA 48. The cooperative fire protection agreement that you have with CAL FIRE provides supplemental staffing to those volunteer responders. And then our CSA 4 Paharo Dunes is staffed through a cooperative agreement that has paid staffing that also is supplemented by volunteer interns that help supplement our staffing there. So operational support services include the purchase and maintenance of fire apparatus, equipment, and safety gear. We have oversight of fire station construction and maintenance projects. We train and coordinate all the delivery of training to our volunteer firefighters. We provide emergency communications and dispatch services. We provide supervision and administration to the volunteers, as they encompass the vast majority of our staffing in the fire department. And then we also assist with the coordination of emergency response, community emergency response teams. response team CERT in CSA 48. And then we pride ourselves on our coordination through Cal OES, but more importantly, through our partner here in the county with our County Office of Emergency Services, Rosemary Anderson. We have a great coordination through County Fire as we are the operation fire coordinator for the state. We work very closely with Rosemary on a lot of different issues. So our main budget objectives, to maximize, thank you, maximize the effectiveness of available fire funding, to maintain adequate staffing and equipment, vehicles and facilities to effectively have emergency response, and then to sustain or improve the County Fire economic position and maintain our fire fund balance for future necessities. So some budget highlights from 2018. Our Cal Fire firefighter ones, which are part of our supplemental contract, are funded fully by the state during the summer months and have, during the declared fire season. And because our declared fire seasons are running much longer, last year started in mid-May and extended through December, that equated to cost savings to the County Fire Last year, we were able to purchase one water tender and one utility vehicle as part of our vehicle replacement program. In addition, we have one water tender that will be rebudgeted in our fiscal year 1920 budget. And that was due to delays in the manufacturer, dealing with the manufacturer's timelines as well as the specification for that apparatus. Also in 2018-19, we had budgeted equipment purchases for some sealand containers to improve our fire training ground, as well as a medical oxygen cascade system that required rebudgeting in the 1920 fiscal year due to construction delays at our regional training center up in Ben Lomond. So in 19 through 21 budget highlights, we have proposed plans to purchase some new apparatus. We have the replacement of one Type 1 fire engine, as well as one utility vehicle, very similar to the one that's in the slide here, to replace some outdated and aging rescue type vehicles that we currently have in our fleet. As well as our 2020-2021 budget, we also have a similar ask for one Type 1 engine and another replacement rescue vehicle.
The picture that you just showed, that one fire truck, about how much does that cost?
That fire engine runs approximately $600,000.
How much?
$600,000.
$600,000, brand new, okay.
Also in our budget, we have fixed assets that will equate to the replacement of four Jaws of Life vehicle extrication tools for the County Fire Department and one additional extrication tool for the CSA 4 Paharo Dunes. As well as, we'll be purchasing a PPE or a personal protective equipment extractor. It's better known as, it's like a washing machine, but it's specifically designed for washing firefighter protective equipment. This is all part of our exposure risk reduction plan to limit the exposure our firefighters have to bad things that can cause cancer and other illnesses. And then we also have plans to replace 100 SCBA's, our self-contained breathing apparatus, the packs that our firefighters wear to enter structures and to protect their airway, to bring us up to the National Fire Protection standards. So looking at our budget, as we look at our revenues, the County Fire Protection revenues encompass both the CSA 48 and CSA 4 Paharo Dunes. This also includes our pass-through accounts for the Prop 172 and Schmidt contributions. Our revenues in 2019-20 also include a 5% estimated increase in tax revenues, as well as a 3.9 CSA fee increase based on the 2018 Consumer Price Index value. As we look additionally into our revenues into 2020-21, those are also based on an estimated 4% tax increase and then a CPI increase for the CSA fee of 3.2%. Our other funds, this is an amount of funds that are allocated that come from, allocated to make up the difference between the revenues and the expenditures. These funds adopted 2019 were elevated. This was due to an offset in non-liquidated contract funds during the fiscal year 1718. So they look a little bit, appear a little bit elevated. So as you look at our expenditures in the 1819, our totals there show somewhat elevated due to that factor of those non-liquidated contract costs. Also in 2019-20, our expenditures include a one-time purchase of $600,000 for our self-contained breathing apparatus. That replacement is not included in the 2021 budget because it's a one-time expenditure. As we look at our revenue breakdown, our revenue breakdown includes our taxes, which are secured, unsecured property taxes, as well as collected penalties. Our charges for services incorporate our CSA fee, fire marshal services, any cost recovery that we have, rent back of our County Fire equipment to the state during the summer months, and then also our management services. Our intergovernmental revenues for the fiscal year 1920 are somewhat higher due to an anticipated grant that we'll be submitting in hopes of replacing those funds for the SCBA replacement. So as you look at our expenditure breakdown, our services supplies, once again, are elevated due to that non-liquidated accounting error that occurred. The cost for our water tender was rebudgeted from the 1718 to the 1819 fiscal year. And then our services supplies were reduced in the 2021 based on that anticipated $600,000 expense for our SCBA's. Salary and benefits reflect our volunteer firefighter stipend, as well as our workers' compensation fees for the volunteers. And then our other charges are those pass-through expenditures, such as the Prop 172 to the County Fire Chiefs Association Schmidt, our CSA 48 fund, as well as our county management charges. Our fixed assets are primarily our mobile equipment replacements that we have. So our budget objectives, possible ballot measure is being considered to explore, being explored for a new benefit assessment that would be supporting the restoration of County Fire firefighter staffing, allowing us to have three-person personnel on our engines, also to provide for allocation for station maintenance, and then also to fund our mobile equipment replacement plan. If we're successful, there could be a possible change in the Cal Fire contract, which would add those additional firefighters back into that contract if we're successful, and also fund the mobile equipment replacement plan. So our intent to contract with Cal Fire for fiscal year 2020 through 2023, and our current, going into our current year of 2019 through 2020 will be the final year of a current three-year contract with Cal Fire. Cal Fire requires contracting agencies to formally notify the state at least one year in advance of their intention to contract. Any changes in service level must be noted in that intent to contract. And then also, our staff recommends that the county submit this notification for the fiscal years 2020 through 2023 by June 30th of 2019. At this point, I just want to take a moment to thank a few folks. I wanted to thank Michael Beaton and his staff from General Services, as well as Trish Daniels, our county analyst, for the preparation of the budget, as well as Ginny Petrus and Melissa Scalia, who are our Cal Fire staff that work very closely with county staff on the preparation and management of our contract as well as budget. And then I just want to take a moment to thank Kay Archer Bowden for her support over the years of the Paharo Dunes contract and just thank her for all her service. And if you'll just indulge me just one minute, I have a small little gift to give to Kay for, a little appreciation from us to her for her efforts.
Thank you very much.
And I also want to take a moment to just welcome Charles Eady, who will be replacing Kay, and I look forward to developing a long-term relationship similar to what we've had with Kay. And with that, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. It's not often we get flowers at a budget hearing, so, but they're well deserved.
Well, let the record reflect, we didn't get them.
That's true. That's true.
I just had two questions about the budget. One is, it's concerning to see the decline in the budget over the next two years. If we don't do a ballot measure, what will that mean for County Fire?
Well, we'll have to look very hard at the service level delivered that we currently are providing and see what the outcomes can be for that. It could be significant based on what funding's available. It could be, you know, extreme, the closure of a fire station and a reduction in service to the community.
And when we have to enter into negotiations on a new contract with Cal Fire, should we be concerned about losing the system of funding that we have right now, which is Cal Fire picking up the fire season and us picking up the non-fire season? I mean, would there be any major changes?
Not during fire season, because we're going to be obligated to continue to staff our fire stations on the Cal Fire side. Where you may see some concerns would be whether we're able to allocate any resources to staff stations in the wintertime for emergency response. Typically, we would reallocate those engines to fuel reductions and other state projects that we're not able to because we're staffing for the County Fire Department.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bowden, do you want to speak to us?
Yes.
Things are getting...
Yes, I'm Kay Archer Bowden. Thank you for the flowers. And I'm representing the homeowners associations at Paharo Dunes, probably for the last time. I started working on this issue 32 years ago. This was the first issue that Paharo Dunes hired me to work on. And there was a terrible relationship between Cal Fire and the homeowners at Paharo Dunes. And through the years, especially because Cal Fire was so cooperative and so good at community relations, there's now a really supportive atmosphere at Paharo Dunes. They get 80%, 90% approval on assessment votes. There are people out there who understand what the Fire Department does and how valuable they are and how essential they are to a place like Paharo Dunes. And the Cal Fire through the years has given just outstanding service, and not just in fire service, but in community relations, and have done really, really well. I do want to talk a little bit about Melissa Scalia and Ginny Petrus, who are the ones who are doing all the numbers and also are in charge of coming out and explaining all the numbers at Paharo Dunes. And they do just a stunningly good job. So that's about all I want to say. It's been really wonderful working with you. And Charlie Eady, as he mentioned, will be replacing me, and I'm sure the relationship will continue as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the flowers.
It's time?
Well, I'd just like to say about Ms. Bowden, you often have a difficult job representing the residents and interfacing with county government and the state. And you've always done that with such great skill, and you tenaciously represented the residents of Paharo Dunes, but you've always done it in a way of collaboration and good communication that has really been outstanding. So we will miss you as part of this annual budget hearing process, and the community will miss you just in terms of your skills of being able to bring people together around critical issues. So thank you.
Thank you.
And just to add to that briefly, Kay is a fierce advocate for that entire section of the county, not just the Dunes. And the issues that you do deal with, with local coastal plan, with fire protection, with coastal and sea level rise, with condition of the roads, with agricultural interface, with flooding, with breaching of the Paharo River, on and on and on, are always contentious issues. And you have a set of homeowners that want access to their home, they want safety, there's guests and residents that want access to it that don't necessarily live here and don't understand the complexities of the system. You are always a fierce advocate, but respectful, polite, and effective. And it's a real model for a lot of people to continue in their interface with the government and for Charlie to try and upkeep, because it's tough to have a couple hundred people telling you something they want immediately in a system that isn't designed to move as quickly as people may want. But I think your actions have made people safer down there. Your work that you did to help with the river and set up a program for that, your work with the establishment of the Fire Department, which is beloved by everybody that lives there, are a real testament. So I appreciate your work, and you will be missed moving forward.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. Becky Steinbruner, I'm a resident of rural Aptos Hills in the state responsibility area. Mr. Beaton, I like your jacket. I am really happy I am able to be here this morning because I am really shocked to see that County Fire budget is being decreased steadily over the next two years. And I want to ask why? Why would you agree to decrease fire protection support at a time when fire protection and defensible space increase is paramount in our state and being discussed continually, daily in the news? What liability are you taking on as supervisors by decreasing funding for the Fire Protection Agency that serves the rural areas of the county, that serves the state parks and protects the populace? What liability are you taking on by agreeing to these decreases? They're unnecessary. There's money out there. I've come and talked with you many times about Proposition 172. County Fire gets zero, zero, from the $18 million that rolls into this county for public safety. One-half of 1% gets shunted through County Fire budget and passed on to the County Fire Chiefs Association. That is not acceptable. A one-time lump sum from this 172 money would bail County Fire out and give it all some breathing room and protect the citizens and the mountains that you are responsible for protecting public safety. I want to also point out that zero of Measure G half-cent sales tax will go to fund County Fire. It was used as a sales tactic for that sales tax increase, and that is wrong. It was deceptive. And people now think that they voted a sales tax in to help support fire. Maybe it does support fire within the county at large, but Ms. Malbre's explanation of how County Fire funding comes, none of that Measure G money will help County Fire, none of it will. And you're agreeing to a decrease, a 13.7% decrease this year and an 8-plus percent next year? I don't understand. At a time also when the federal government is saying that they're going to make it more onerous to reimburse the state and local governments for strike team expenses, and you're going to decrease the money that you're willing to give our County Fire Department? That is not acceptable, and I'm here today to stand up for County Fire and all of the residents and the ecosystems in the mountains. Do not allow this decrease and fund County Fire. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. I'll bring it back to the board for deliberation action.
If you'd like, I can address that issue.
Sure.
So as we explained earlier, the current year expenditures in the budget were significantly elevated because some contract liquidations at the year-end were not processed. They were, it was just a miscommunication between the department and the auditor controller about liquidating some of the contracts. It skewed the numbers for 1819, and this makes it look like we're spending less in 1920, but County Fire is actually spending more in 1920. So it's really an accounting error that took place. It's not a real reduction that took place. In fact, County Fire is getting, spending more money in the budget year than less. And this is explained, there was an email, believe, sent back to some of the individuals who asked questions. who asked questions about this. So, anyway, I don't know if Mr. Beaton, if you want Mr. Beaton to explain more about it, or if that's...
Yeah, I think it's helpful. Well, I mean, we can, but I feel like Chief Larkin went through this in his presentation. I mean, Ms. Steinbrenner, maybe you didn't hear the presentation, but this was explained in detail before you came up here and made those claims. So, if you want, please, Mr. Beaton, explain it if you feel it's necessary. But it was a slide, it was well explained by the chief. I'm not really sure, maybe you missed that part of the budget presentation, but all that element was totally explained.
Kaye, anything else? Is there a motion?
I would move the recommended actions for County Fire.
Sure. So, motion by Leopold?
Second.
Second by Caput. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes unanimously. Then, thank you very much, and thank you to your whole team for the excellent service you provide. We're going to move on to item number 47, which is, consider the 2019-21 proposed budgets for the district attorney, public administrator, as outlined in the reference budget documents, and schedule the continuing agreements list for the final approval on last budget day hearings on June 25, 2019, as outlined in a memorandum of the district attorney. So, we'll give the district attorney a moment to come up.
Just want to say, thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the board for having us before you again, as we do every year, to talk a little bit about our budget, what we hope to accomplish, and frankly, a little bit of what we have accomplished. And I also want to take this time to sincerely thank County Administrative Officer Carlos Palacios for his continued support, as you have, as the board, supported us in our quest to bring public safety to this community. And we wanted to specifically thank Nicole Coburn from the CAO's office, as well as Sven Stafford from the CAO's office. So, with that, we're going to just go through our brief slide presentation, and I will be brief, and just wanted to talk a little bit about responsibilities. And the first responsibility that I want to speak about, which is up on the slide, is the California Constitution that lays out public safety as the first responsibility of local government and local officials, and that there is an obligation to give priority to the provisions and adequacy of public safety services. This is what we do, this is what we have taken an oath to do, and once again, want to thank the board for your support in enabling us to do this. The second thing I would like to just briefly touch on are the duties that the DA's office has, and that duty primarily is to promote public safety in our community. We have a duty to follow various laws and statutes. Those are the United States Constitution, the California Constitution, California statutes, as well as the rules of professional conduct. We also have a duty to protect the rights of victims and the rights of defendants, which I think surprises some people. But we, as district attorneys, are frankly the only person in the criminal justice system who takes an oath to do justice, and that includes protecting the rights, not only of victims of crime, but actually of defendants. We have a duty that is set forth to review cases and to file cases. We have a duty to investigate and prosecute cases, and we also have a duty to do this in an ethical and just manner. The DA's office, in my time there, and under the tutelage of my predecessor and dear friend, Bob Lee, came up with a mission statement, and we have this on the walls of the DA's office. It is our driving sort of force whenever issues come about, and that is to promote and ensure public safety through ethical and just prosecution. It is a guiding principle for everything that we do in that office. I also want to show you this slide, which I know some of you have seen before, and that is essentially that the referring agencies that refer cases to our office. You can see that it's literally the ones that we are familiar with, which is every major police department and sheriff's office in this county. But we also get cases from various other sources. We get them from UCSC Police Department, we get them from the Highway Patrol, we get them from state parks, Fish and Wildlife, and other agencies. And it's our duty and our obligation to look at these cases when they come in, to make independent determinations about whether there are crimes that have been committed, whether we've identified the proper people, and whether we can actually go forward and file these cases. So, I do think it's important, in the discussion of who the DA's office is and what we do, to understand that we are not a rubber stamp for any of the police agencies, that we are tasked with and conduct independent assessments of criminal cases. Oftentimes, we investigate those or request follow-up from the agencies to investigate Some of the highlights that I wanted to talk about for the 2018-2019 year is this MDIC. It's a multidisciplinary interview center that we have now used for about 100 forensic interviews, typically in cases involving children who are victims of sexual assault. This is a center that you all supported, and frankly, has buy-in from every law enforcement agency in this county, as well as child protective services and health services, to have sort of a friendly, neutral, not police environment where children can be interviewed, and the goal is to interview them one time or reduce the number of interviews, thereby reducing the trauma in a child-friendly environment. And I'm pleased to say that this is up and running and is doing fantastic, and we are seeing nothing but increased use of the center as it gets going. We also continue to, out of the 14 inspectors that we have, two of them are continuing to play the lead role and the number-two role in the Santa Cruz County Anti-Crime Team. We've got people out there that are literally on the streets in a frontline enforcement capacity, two from the DA's office and others from other jurisdictions, sort of a force multiplier. And you can see the number of firearms that they are taking literally out of the hands of people that are ready to use them, the 285 parole probation searches that they have conducted, as well as these 372 field interviews. They also have taken, as you can see, 975 grams of narcotics off the street by this sort of frontline enforcement, which, as a DA's office, we believe is important. You need to work a problem from the front end, and you need to work it from the back end. And these dedicated individuals from our office and from other agencies in the county literally are out there on the weekend, you know, in the evenings, contacting people and doing stops, doing searches, and literally taking the guns out of the hands of people that are ready to use them. We also wanted to highlight the consumer and environmental protection efforts that have taken place. You can see that year-to-date, in terms of enforcement actions for consumer protection, we have seized a total or gotten a total of $1.3 million this year alone. My understanding is there's some other things that are in the hopper that are sitting, frankly, on the Attorney General's desk, waiting for them to review. We are also out there in terms of civil penalties for environmental offenses. We collected $220,000 this year, and we are really sort of redoubling our consumer and environmental protection efforts. There's a new public safety center that I know that you're all aware of that has opened mid-county. The goal there is to do more outreach in a centralized location for vulnerable members of our community, elderly in particular, and other members, and to focus on environmental protection and environmental issues. The Victim Witness Assistance Program, which is an important part of the DA's office, these are individuals who literally help victims of crime through the court process, whether that's actually going to court and assisting them, or paying for compensation for relocation, for locks on the doors, and those sort of things. And you can see from the documents here that we were able to successfully get $1.1 million in grants to try to help that. We are pleased to say that we have instituted a therapy and comfort dog program, which is paid for by grant funding, and that is Naylani, who is actually here today, sitting in the front.
Hold on just a second.
Certainly.
Mr. Alexander, we interrupted the meeting, so you can either sit down or leave.
Okay. Please, go ahead.
So, the point of that dog is to assist people who have been victims of crime in terms of going to court...
Mr. Alexander, you've been warned, you can either sit down or leave. Shut up. Okay. You're... Please leave. We need to adjourn the meeting. Okay, we'll adjourn, we'll take a 15-minute break while Mr. Alexander is escorted from this meeting. Thank you.
I'll go for a second.
All right. So, we are back, and we will continue with the district attorney's presentation on his budget item.
Thank you. I think we finished up with the dog and the year-to-date claims that have been processed by the Victim Witness Center. I want to also say that we ran a seminar this year on human trafficking. This is a problem that is existing nationwide, and it's something that's come to the forefront of a lot of people's attention recently. And we decided that it was something that we wanted to sort of take a role, a lead role, and look into. We had a county-wide human trafficking symposium that literally had about 300 people from different aspects of county government and private sectors. And we had a speaker who literally was trafficked herself, has an unbelievable story, was quite familiar with our area, having been trafficked at certain points in this community. And it was really kind of the first time, frankly, in my experience, to see so many people from different agencies, not just law enforcement, health services, human services, faith-based groups, community groups, sort of come together. And it is literally step one for us. So, the first step was to try to educate ourselves, and the second step is to sort of try to put together a comprehensive approach to dealing with this problem. It's a problem that has sort of immediate, interim, and long-term issues. In other words, if you are able to help somebody who is trafficked, their needs do not stop just when the court case is over. There's continuing needs for support, for education, for all sorts of things. So, we really are trying to come up with and work in this community with a comprehensive approach to this problem. And I suspect what is also going to be happening down the line is we will have more targeted sort of enforcement actions when it comes to human trafficking, once we have sort of in place a more robust system of care for individuals who've been trafficked. And finally, I just wanted to hit a couple of the budgetary items.
Are the doors locked out there for anybody that wants to come in?
There are 7.06 million in total revenues. The expenditures are 20.3 million. There's total funding, staff funding of 104 full-time employees. This year, we've been trying, as we have every year, to be sort of responsible in our requests, not expand in areas that we don't need. But we have requested, and the budget proposes a full-time DA inspector with the increasing demands that we have, and a full-time program coordinator that will be able to do outreach and coordinate some of the sort of social messages that we need to get out there. You can see that we have vacancies, full-time vacancies, that are listed, and unfunded staff positions, as listed. So, the status quo budget is anticipated for 2021, and a lot of the increases that we have had are just cost increases for existing staff. And I do want to thank the board in the past for helping us retain the staff that we have. Our operational objectives, we have talked about a little bit, increasing community awareness of human trafficking, expanding services provided to the Child Interview Center that we spoke about, which, on a daily basis, is being used more and more, to leverage technology and streamline existing discovery procedures so that we can be more efficient in terms of providing discovery to defense attorneys and that sort of thing. We've also, the court changed over to a new computer system several years ago. We used to get information from that system, and I'm pleased to report that we are back in a position to gain and are gaining information from the court systems so that we can be more efficient with the use of our staff time. We're really with the new safety center, trying to do more proactive outreach investigation for environmental violations, as well as consumer protection violations. We're interested in doing front-end education, as I know some of you are aware, having done some of this outreach in your communities specifically. But it's something that we are very interested. We, as an office, pride ourselves on front-end and back-end sort of solutions, which I think is the most appropriate sort of way to combat things. And we are also, as I mentioned before, we've got two people in the anti-crime team, the gang team, if you will, and we are looking at doing outreach with those particular individuals into our community in a proactive way to children that are, you know, relatively young, because that's what they're seeing, is that young people are being affected by gang members and environmental factors, and they're really interested. They came to us and said, we would like to try to do some focused intervention at younger ages, which is one of our goals. And also, educating the community and law enforcement on the effects of criminal activity and prosecution on crime survivors. We've done some studies, and we are part of some ongoing studies, getting feedback from people who are survivors of crime, victims of crime, if you will, on how we can improve the process, and we are taking all of that information to heart. And finally, researching the feasibility for operating a new neighborhood court, to use some of the restorative justice principles. This is one of the things that had come out of Safe on Crime with Eric Holder, the Attorney General, and various other folks. And one of the things that San Francisco, for example, is utilizing in other places is a neighborhood court system. So, we have agreed to research the feasibility of a neighborhood court system to see how we could effectively use that and try to resolve low-level criminal cases without necessarily clogging the courts and expending resources that we don't need to. So, with that, I don't have anything else to really say, except thank you for your continued support of DA's office in particular and public safety, and I'm certainly open to any questions that anybody has.
Sure. First, thank you for your work in keeping our community safe. Second, I just had a quick question. The environmental law violations, what kind of environmental law violations are you seeing?
There's all sorts of environmental laws. We talked about, there's stream bed, you know, sometimes you will have individuals who, for whatever reasons, are redirecting sort of stream beds for their own sort of personal use, thereby affecting wildlife and that sort of things. We have people who are just straight up polluting. We have, sometimes you will find illegal grows that are using pesticides and other sort of things that are literally polluting our public lands in many cases. So, those are a lot of the environmental things that we see. We also see cases from fishing game, people, you know, impacting the bay and taking things that they shouldn't take or in quantities they shouldn't take.
Okay. Thank you. Subway's Leopold.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Really appreciate the work that you do, and I've enjoyed working with a member of your office, Tamara George, on the Justice and Gender Task Force. She's made a great contribution there. I really appreciate the way in which you're looking at the operational objectives, because they really cover the wide swath of the things you do in the district attorney's office. The human trafficking piece, I know a sad staff member who has some experience with this and... this and, and went to the, the conference and was just, was really knocked out by the material there, and really thought that it was great that we were focusing on this issue. And I, I think that raising the awareness is important, but do we have any information about increase in the number of human trafficking cases? I mean, we don't, that wouldn't be a requirement, but it, but I'm just, awareness, it becomes important.
I can tell you this, that the way that typically we see them now, and things have changed with the advent of computer and social media sort of contacts with people who are trafficked. I can tell you that in terms of, of trafficking, it's something that is not necessarily obvious to us. We get cases, we get cases when things happen, we get cases from various jurisdictions and investigate those. And as you might be aware, they are very difficult to get people sort of on board to, to prosecute, and on board to sort of get out of the situation that they're in. This was literally step one. This was bringing some individuals who were trafficked, frankly, were trafficked at certain points in our community, and we're describing how certain things are here that we just don't see them. So, the idea was, step one, educate. Step two, sort of figure out the pieces, from the law enforcement piece to the social service piece, to the, the community groups, so that we can provide continuum of support for individuals. And then, once that's in place and you have a comprehensive sort of plan, you're in a much better position to sort of target these things. So, in terms of the numbers, it's still something that is difficult, I think, to see. We, in speaking to people who have firsthand knowledge, have every confidence that it does exist, but in terms of the absolute numbers, I think that's a difficult thing right now until we sort of take a deeper dive into it to find out.
Sure. I've participated in some Rising International events and spoken to some women who've been trafficked in our community.
Yes.
So, and I imagine as we raise the awareness, then we will actually see probably a larger number of cases, because, because there's a lot of it that's flying under the radar, right?
Yes, I think that's a true statement, and that certainly is our hope.
On the multidisciplinary interview center, I'm really glad to see the success of that. The, wanting to see more people, does that mean there's a waiting list right now, or is, is there any delay in people being interviewed because?
No.
Okay.
No, I, in fact, I just was down the other day, there were three separate interviews. It comes, sometimes it comes in waves, and you need to be flexible, but no, there, there is not a waiting list. I mean, these are, we have a dedicated inspector who's literally full-time running that center and conducting interviews, and if somebody needs an interview, they get it, and they get it in short order. But I think what we're seeing is, law enforcement is looking at this model and saying, "We can use it here, we can use it here, you can use it for people who are witnesses also, not just victims of, of child abuse."
Sure.
So, it's, it's literally on a daily basis, we're seeing more and more sort of use of this center.
Great. On the gang prevention efforts, I think you can't ever take the, your foot off the pedal in making sure about gang prevention. I'm wondering, do you see this new outreach program connected into the existing youth violence prevention task force work?
Yeah, I think-
Because there's been a lot of, there's been a lot of efforts around that.
No, there have been, and I think it's absolutely parallel. Our sort of, the impetus for this was listening to these officers that are on the street, right? They've got absolute firsthand, boots-on-the-ground information, and what they are telling us is it, it's looking to them like kids need to be sort of educated and targeted from a law enforcement, from a social service perspective, from a health service perspective earlier. And they, I know that they've done some outreach at this point to the schools to try to get kind of a, their foot in the door that way, and then go out and sort of target a lot of the, the younger people. And I do think there's a lot of overlap and, and certainly some crossover, for sure.
Yeah, I mean, it would be great not to have it just run parallel, but leverage what's going on there, those relationships, because I think there's, there's, you know, that we have schools at the table and those social service agencies, those relationships with young people, and it, to the extent that, that we could harness the, the energy of the two efforts, that would be great.
Yes, I, I actually agree with you, for sure.
The last area that I'll talk about is the neighborhood courts. I'm very excited to see the examination. I know you and I have talked about this before. I think there's a good model, and we had, you know, part of Smart on Crime and a bunch of other agencies held a restorative justice panel here last November, and that was well-attended. Members of your staff were there, and one of the things they talked about was the neighborhood courts program. I think there, there could be a real benefit to our community, and I think, I look forward to the work as you look at this, to, to see how we can make this happen throughout the county. I think it'd be a real benefit for everyone involved, and reducing the, whatever the clogging of the courts are-
Right.
-would obviously be very helpful. So, whatever we can do to be helpful, and I, I would look forward to talking with you about it more over the next year.
Well, thank you for that support.
Subway's Brendan.
Thank you, thank you, Chair, and thank you for the presentation. Building again on the MDIC, that was really your vision. I know it's been implemented in a lot of other counties, but to see that do so well here is, is concerning on the one side, that, that it's needed, but on the other side is a remarkable opportunity for victims to not feel like they're being revictimized through the process. So, I appreciate your work on that. I also appreciate your willingness to come into the Aptos Village along with Sheriff Hart. We're looking forward to, especially on the seniors' crimes and the fraud, having those trainings, having that outreach into the second district will be important, to have the presence of all of you there already from probation. The DA and the sheriff's office has already made a difference. A lot of people are coming in on the walk-in side. And one of the things that I, I like to point out during the budget time is just a reminder about the fact that how, when law enforcement, which is frontline, and you have frontline as well, but when law enforcement handles a case, in many respects, the case is handed off, and it could take literally years by the time that something's adjudicated, and it makes, people don't recognize that there's somebody working on that case the entire time. And as you know, it's, when you walk into court, it's, you're for the people, and I recognize that victims generally feel alone in that case, and they don't recognize that literally it's the state of California versus, and, and you represent that. And I appreciate the fact that you keep victims up front in that sense, and make sure that you walk them through that entire process, not just you, but your victim advocate and all the attorneys that work for you. These cases go on for an exceptionally long time, and there's multiple cogs within the system, from the frontline law enforcement to what you do, to the probation side on the back end as well, and, and I just appreciate your work, and it's a difficult, it's a difficult, difficult job, and there are some things that are coming in on both the national and international side that you have to deal with that I don't know that a lot of people are aware of. So, again, thank you and your team for your work.
Thank you for your support.
Yes, Subway's Chris.
Yeah, I, I really, you have a wide variety of issues that you have to face, very sadly in some respects. You know, in the gang prevention issue, is, when does this, when do they try to draw these kids in, 10 to 12 years old?
The information we're getting is that younger and younger, and I think it's, it's a scenario, they were talking, they really have spoken about trying to go into fifth, sixth grade, seventh grade classes to try to explain sort of what is, what is out there and how, you know, you may want to avoid these things, and, and try to talk to them from a perspective that has credibility. And it's, you know, I was surprised, you know, these guys are out, the inspectors and the others are out there sort of combating generally older kids, although they're, they're taking guns out of the hands of juveniles, too. And really, they are the ones who said, "Hey, look, we really think there's a need," because as time goes on, it just seems that it's getting younger and younger in terms of targets and, and people who are focused on gang sort of recruitment and that sort of thing. And they're talking about, you know, the age groups that I, that I've talked about, younger, a little younger than the BOSTA sort of model, which is out there.
Well, yeah, I want to thank the educational systems that we have here, too, for cooperating in that effort. It's, it's very important, it's, it's sad that that's, but that's a, a place where we can maybe really give them information and, and a preventative effort. I want to especially, I, I agree with everything that's been said about the inter, the multidisciplinary in the neighborhood, or interview center and the neighborhood court system, but I want to really say thank you for your attention in the office and consumer fraud protection, and those among seniors, Doug Allen in particular, that's been out in my district several times. One of the things, it's elder abuse, it's just amazing, it's, it's increasing, too, at a pretty good rate, I believe, too. And if there's, some, you know, the elderly, they don't, they're not savvy to the, the computer systems and whatever, whatever models coming out, if they wanted to get to a hotline and say, "Hey, I've got a concern here," could, is there a, a basic hotline they should call?
They can call the DA's office right now. We do have, and we instituted in the last year or so, a computerized sort of form that they can fill out, but they are always welcome to call either the DA's office, where we can direct them to wherever they need to go. They can also call local law enforcement in the jurisdictions that they're in to try to get the ball rolling on this. And you do point out an important part of what our commitment is, and that is trying to do education on the front end to seniors going out into the community and with the, this Aptos Service Center, hopefully having people be able to come there to prevent sort of front-end abuse. But yes, there, there's, there's a number, you can call the DA's office, you can call the sheriff's department, you can call Santa Cruz Police Department, whoever, sort of the jurisdiction that you're in. And if they can get online, there's actually a complaint form that they can fill out and comes to our office and gets filled.
Okay, I encourage you. Thank you for having that, you've had that available for some time, though.
Yeah.
And the elder abuse issue, is that, there've been more reports of that, too, in the recent years?
It's funny, because, yeah, well, it depends, there's physical abuse, then there's financial abuse, and they're different animals typically. We have recently prosecuted a lot of physical abuse cases in the courts, some very serious that you, you may be familiar with. And I will say, the scams that are out there, which, one of the positions that we have is this new position that we're hoping will be used to educate and to push out information about the latest scams, because as soon as you, you hear about one, the social security stamp or the jury duty, there's another one around the corner that seems to be popping up, and I, I can't stress how important we think it is to get education out there to prevent people on the front end from becoming victims.
Thank you very much for your work, and everybody in the office.
Thank you for your support.
Subway's Kevin.
Thank you. I appreciate all you're doing, too, and you have such a, a difficult balancing act to do with what's right and what's wrong in a certain situation. Well, you mentioned scams. Do you, do you get them on your cell phone, too? I mean, I do.
I do. I got one the other day that explained to me that I missed jury duty, which I was quite certain I did not miss.
Right.
Yes, I do. I, I don't, we have had discussions about how to look into that and how to try to prevent that, and what we're finding, not only my office, but when I have conversations with other DA's offices, those numbers can now be mimicked, right? I, I get them in their, the prefixes for my, my community. And what we're finding, as we try to delve deeper into this, is that a lot of, they're all cloned or mimicked, but a lot of these are offshore phone numbers-
Sure.
-that are coming in. I got one recently from Slovenia in the middle of the night, and I was pretty sure I didn't know anyone in Slovenia, and then I did a little research in the morning, and sure enough, it's, it was a scam.
And then briefly, what I would ask, the, not getting into extremes, because when you're dealing with human trafficking and drugs and all that, you know, you can go from the wall all the way to an open border and everything like that. So, you do have to deal sometimes with ICE, and they're not always wrong, right? They're sometimes looking for somebody that is actually, you know, it's a very serious thing.
There are scenarios, I will say this, and maybe I should have told, mentioned this. We have, with the cooperation of the FBI, the US Marshals, and local law enforcement, sheriff's office, the last one, and Santa Cruz Pudida on the one before, been able to secure eight individuals who have fled to Mexico and been brought back to stand trial, most of those for homicide cases. And in the old days, you know, I've been here since '94, if you fled to Mexico, either as an American citizen or even as a Mexican citizen, the chances of getting you back in California or in Santa Cruz to stand trial were very, very, very minimal chances to get, to get you back. But I will say this, two of the inspectors, particularly in my office, have traveled to Mexico and built relationships, and those relationships and the cooperation with the US Marshal Service, with the FBI on many of the cases, have led to us bringing back people who committed horrible, brutal murders to, to stand trial. So, there has been some cooperation with various federal agencies-
Sure.
-which frankly is necessary in order to bring some of these people back to stand justice, or stand trial, get justice.
And with some of the, some of the problems, like human trafficking and, and whatever, what percentage are underage and what percentage are adults?
I, I, that's a very good question, and I can tell, I don't think we have a handle in this community necessarily on how many are underage and how many are adults. I can tell you that in our, our dealings with this, we have seen both, but in terms of a statistical breakdown, I, I unfortunately don't have an answer, and that's part of the reason we're sort of getting this going, is so that we can really sort of identify what's taking place in our community and do targeted enforcement.
I know, it's, it's hard to have a specific answer, but it's something that we're all looking at. And, for example, how much is coming from across the border, and how much is homegrown?
There's, I can tell you this, the person, you know, I, I think a lot of us may have in our mind, this is what a person who's trafficked, you know, should look, this is their background, this is where they should sort of work and all that. And the person who came and is a survivor literally went to a private school, came from a family that was wealthy, or at least upper-middle class, got involved in what she thought was a modeling audition, and was kidnapped at gunpoint, and then literally forced into a life of sexual trafficking. So, I, I think the lesson that we are learning is trafficking can cut across sort of all, it's like domestic violence, it happens in all segments of our community. And certainly, there's, there's segments that we think of somebody being trafficked from, you know, a foreign country that's brought here, but, but I don't think by any means that is necessarily the majority or, or the model-
You're right.
-that it cuts across all boundaries.
And this, I could ask the same question of the sheriff's department when they're up here, too, but it would be basically, you're all working together and you're-
That is the absolute plan. We are, we are, it's a coordinated effort between everybody in law enforcement in this community, but not just the law enforcement, but social services, community groups, and that sort of thing, because as you might imagine, somebody who's trafficked doesn't necessarily have resources. Some people don't have education, they have no means by which to support themselves outside of that. So, it's not just the court and the law enforcement piece, which is what we're learning, but it's how to take care of them, how to help them, how to plug them into a, a life, actually, so that they can be successful as they move through their life. And that's the difficult part. That's what really requires this coordinated effort across not just law enforcement, but other aspects and segments of our society.
Right. And I, I want to thank your department, you've helped, you know, in District Four and some specific cases, and, and in general, just hypothetically, if somebody does lose their home and they're elderly and they were taken advantage of, maybe by somebody, somebody in the family, or it could be somebody outside the family, in some cases, you're able to help out where they, they get some of the money back, because the bank does want the money on the mortgage.
Yeah, elder financial abuse is something that we absolutely are deeply committed to, and I would just encourage anybody who is within earshot, if you know somebody who is a victim of financial abuse, please contact either the law enforcement agency or the DA's office as soon as you, you can, so that we can maybe freeze bank accounts and do certain things to try to compensate people and make them whole.
And if anybody is watching or listening to what you're saying, you actually do, because you've done it in District Four, and everybody appreciates it, you know?
We're, we're deeply committed to protecting all of the community, but we're also deeply committed to protecting vulnerable members of our community-
Oh, yeah.
-which include the elderly.
You bet. And then I guess the last one would be, let's see, survivors, children of survivors, let's say financially or whatever, or domestic violence or something comes up. say financially or whatever, or domestic violence or something comes up, is there some kind of fund that helps them out, the family, that's, because Social Security can't jump in right away, and welfare, I don't know, you know, it's so confusing, and you have a couple of kids that are, you know, 10 years old, eight years old, it's not their fault, and all of a sudden, there's no money.
Right. No, I can tell you, our victim assistance program is multifaceted. They will actually go with people, help people through the court system, which is maybe the most obvious sort of role that they play. But they are also behind the scenes, filling out all sorts of financial claims for people. So they take care of burial expenses, they take care of relocation expenses, they take care of people who, children who need counseling. And there's a whole host of sort of money that is out there, state money and some federal money, that they, their job and what they are happy to do is to try to plug people in to make sure that people are as sort of whole as they can be after a traumatic incident.
Is that the consumer affairs part of your...
It's the, well, consumer affairs may bring it in, but that's our victim witness assistance. So it's the, it's basically people whose job is to assist victims.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your support. I appreciate it.
Great. Now it's an opportunity for members of the public to speak to us about this item. If you'd like to speak, please come forward.
Gary Richard Arnold. I was wondering... We heard the district attorney say that there's a phone number for people to contact when they hear things out of order, or also to contact your local law enforcement. The district attorney has been told some time ago of two people up here that are sending bouquets back and forth, and that was by John Leopold and Zach Friend, gave threats of violence to members of the Grange, two different Granges, one on 17th and one in Aptos. In fact, in the one in Aptos, they threatened something might happen to their building. These complaints were made both to your department and to the sheriff. I have never heard a word back. I'm wondering if, like we see in the House of Cards in the very first episode, there's special treatment to people that violate the law, that happen to be working for the county or for your or another department. There has been a transition from self-government to regional government, moving authorities from councils and cities to a COG called Ambag. This is deliberate. Freedom Forum, which they destroyed, was in existence for over a decade. John Leopold attended one of the candidates' nights. We also found that the other threats came from an outfit called COPA. It's a group of three or four churches, it's funded by the Panetta Institute. I want to show you the censorship that's been increasing all the time. We've got Leon Panetta, we've got Mr. Coonerty, and we got Zach Friend over here. Ryan Coonerty has adopted, and this whole board has adopted, a thing called the Rosenberg Rules, which absolutely destroy access, for people's access to the podium. In fact, we saw yesterday a complete break in what he was presenting, and that was, he asked for public comment on the consent calendar, but it's been refused. There is no consistency. This board arbitrarily shuts people down day in and day out. Mr. Coonerty is very closely related with the Resource Center, which sponsored actually the very same speaker that was scheduled for the two Granges. And we noticed, because this is a sanctuary city, giving you a lot of extra problems, there was no questions about how many of these people are illegal. These people serve the Panetta machine. And I also encourage you to instruct your people on the Brown Act, the violations even by your armed people that are not directly employed by the government or the Sheriff's Department are not familiar with the freedom people have. The previous speaker had just won a lawsuit in Santa Clara for the same thing that happened to him today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other person who'd like to speak to us on the consent agenda?
For the record, I have attended two Freedom Forums.
Okay. Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the board for deliberation action.
I'll move the recommended actions.
Second.
Motion by Friend, second by Leopold. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, that passes unanimously. Thank you for your work. I will now move on to item number 48, to consider that 2019 to 2021 proposed budgets for the probation department, as outlined in the reference budget documents, schedule the continuing agreement list for final approval on last-day budget hearings, June 25th, 2019, and take related actions as outlined in the memorandum of the chief probation officer.
Good morning, Chair Coonerty and Board of Supervisors, Mr. Palacios, Fernando Droual, the Chief Probation Officer. With me here today is Valerie Thompson, my Assistant Chief Probation Officer. It's a pleasure to be here before you to present our fiscal year 2019-21 proposed budget. We appreciate the opportunity to highlight a few of the many ways my staff contribute to public safety. New feature this year and in the coming years will be to highlight our progress in achieving departmental objectives as identified in the county operational plan. Before I begin, I want to thank the CAO office and their staff for the continued support of probation and allowing us to fulfill our vision and mission, which is driven by my innovative and passionate staff. I want to thank my staff for their dedicated work each and every day to promote public safety in the most unique and meaningful ways. With me here today, behind me is my leadership team, they're right behind me. I have Melissa Allen, our Administrative Services Manager. We have Sarah Ryan, who's our Superintendent of the Juvenile Hall, and Sarah Fletcher, our Adult Services Director. I'm excited to share our department's objectives and key steps from the county operational plan. Throughout today's presentation, I will also demonstrate the alignment between my department's strategic plan and the county's plan, and our work to operationalize both of these plans. This past year, I had the honor of chairing the Comprehensive Health and Safety Operational Steering Committee. It was a new and exciting opportunity to work with other departments to assist in the design of the operational plan. Most of our strategies and objectives exist in the focus area of comprehensive health and safety. Today, I hope to demonstrate the progress we have made in meeting key objectives of both of our plans. I'm going to take a moment and let you know what probation is. We occupy numerous lanes of the criminal justice system, therefore, a brief explanation of all that we do is in order. We are part of the Public Safety and Justice category of the budget, and part of the Comprehensive Health and Safety focus area in the county strategic and operational plans. As a criminal justice sanction, probation is a tool that holds people convicted of crimes accountable and helps oversee the rehabilitation using evidence-based rehabilitation strategies. Evidence-based practices are supported by scientific research to reduce recidivism. The goal of prevention is to prevent crime and delinquency, reduce recidivism, restore victims, and promote healthy families and communities by doing the following. We administer research-based juvenile and adult programs. We make recommendations to the courts and enforce its orders in communities in our community by providing supervision and treatment for juveniles and adults. And we oversee the management and operation, programming, and administration of our juvenile detention facility. I want to take a minute and review our progress related to Objective 172 and the county operational plan, open a new public safety center in Aptos Village. Based on this photo, I think we all have made good progress. For the first time in many years, we've expanded and enhanced our accessibility to services at key locations throughout the county. One of the strategies in the public health and safety focus area of the operational plan was to develop the facilities necessary to foster shared safety and opportunities. We are pleased to partner with our sheriff, district attorney, and supervisor Friend in increasing accessibility for clients by opening probation offices for the first time ever in mid-county, in our mid-county location at the Aptos Village Public Safety Center. There, we will house our adult investigations unit and have a drop-in space for both adult and juvenile officers. This, again, will provide better and much-needed access to our community, and also for our community to come visit us when necessary. These goals help us met our own internal department objective plan, which was our goal number three, which you don't have before you, but, which was to enhance and increase partnerships with justice stakeholders. So we're making progress. I've included this photo in case you've ever wondered what it's like to have a high number of elected officials and your county administrative officer watch you use a pair of large scissors. This is what it looks like, and it can be very nerve-wracking. I assure you, it is. That's our public safety center, and I do thank you, our service center, and thank you for attending. So about a month ago, as you're aware, we opened our probation service center at 303 Water Street, right across the street. And I do, again, thank you all for attending this event. We are making progress in meeting Objective 161, which is by June 2020, probation will serve 10% of all new clients at the service center. Opening the service center was one of our comprehensive health and safety goals. The service center is a partnership with multiple service providers and county partners that will allow for rapid referrals to critical services that address key criminogenic needs of our probation officers. We'll be co-locating service, multiple service providers, and we'll start services such as substance use disorder treatment, mental health services, benefits, employment, et cetera. I'm going to talk a little bit about our accomplishments in fiscal year 2018-19. One of the goals for our pre-trial services for fiscal year 1819 was to improve our ability to gather, track, and analyze data. This past year, we were able to implement a new pre-trial module in our case management system. The result is the, we are now better to record and analyze more complex data. And also allows us to use the technology that exists with clients, which, one of those is to remind them of their court hearings, or other alerts like, please charge your GPS, that's helpful to clients. The juvenile division continues to focus on youth and family engagement to support youth remaining safely in their communities while reducing overreliance on out-of-home placements, the use of which renders poor outcomes. Today, our juvenile director, our assistant director, and some juvenile probation officers are attending the Chief Probation Officer's Continuum of Care Reform Annual Conference in San Diego, and are representing us and talking about our county and our accomplishments in reducing the use of out-of-home placement through the success of child and family team In 2018, we saw historically low average daily population of youth in custody. As you are aware, we are not alone in seeing this precipitous drop in the number of youth detained in juvenile halls throughout California. We were far ahead of the curve back in the early 2000s, when we started our Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative work, and thankfully, many others across the state and across the country have caught on. We also had the foresight to not build expensive, new, shiny, large facilities that unfortunately many other counties did. They now find themselves with brand-new juvenile halls or newly added units that sit empty. Locally, we had started a conversation along with county officials, local leaders, and other thought partners about our next steps related to our juvenile hall. I've commissioned a detention utilization study, and assure you, we will be thoughtful and consider, inform through data and community needs, all options that exist as the county reconsideres our numerous facility needs. We will keep our county and community engaged and informed. Here is how the probation department is structured. We have three divisions, each with unique responsibilities that are tied together by our department's strategic plan. One of our strategic priorities in our 2016 to 2021 strategic plan was operational excellence, with a goal of alignment between the three divisions. I'm going to show you, this illustrates our caseloads as of December 31st, 2018, and in adult services. Since 2014, we've seen an overall 30% decrease in active supervision cases. While the numbers are less, we are seeing more cases with moderate to high needs levels. In a perfect world, we'd have the right resources needed to properly supervise them. This is not the case for many of our clients, who are not on specialized caseloads. And while there's been an overall reduction in caseload size, certain specialized populations have increased. As you see, there's a 31% increase in the AB 109 population overall. Trends also continue to show an increase in our pre-adjudication involvement for the probation, with pre-trial populations booming and pre-sentence investigation reports on the rise, as along with a backlog and new legislative mandates like Proposition 63. Here are some of our budget highlights. The total proposed budget that supports our three divisions for fiscal year 1920 is nearly $25 million. There is a total overall increase of 4.9%. The general fund contribution is nearly $7.5 million, an increase of 21.5%. Revenues for us are down this year. At the start of the budget development cycle in January of this year, we had to close a nearly $3 million gap. As is the case in most budget years, our operational expenses, which includes our salaries benefits, have increased significantly. There was actually for 1920, a $1.3 million increase, and for fiscal year 2020-21, there'll be another $1 million increase. Additionally, we lost nearly $1.5 million in grant revenues, and we anticipated some of that, but not all of it. So our revenues relying on state allocations have really not kept up with our operational expenses. Our costs continue to outpace revenues, and therefore staffing levels have stayed flat and even decreased slightly. So this trend doesn't really match our workload increases, particularly in the adult division. I'll give you one example of where funding decreased that we did not anticipate, was in SB 678. We lost nearly $500,000, and without the support of the county general fund increase, this could have resulted in the loss of positions. A small part of our budget challenge was offset by the move of two of our IT analysts to ISD to centralized positions in the county. Our current funding challenges really exist in the adult services division, and that's why I'm focusing on that quite a bit. That's where, while caseloads have decreased, we have more requirements with those moderate to high-level need cases. We have three focus areas in adult services. It's our largest division and has numerous responsibilities. So we provide a full spectrum of services operating around three major focus areas: pre-trial services, court coverage and investigations, and community-based supervision. Our pre-trial unit completes assessments and makes recommendations regarding the release of detention, release or detention of clients pending criminal charges, and provides monitoring to those deemed eligible by the courts to remain safely in the community. In 2018, our staff completed a remarkable 2,700 public safety assessments. Our investigations unit conducts pre-sentence and pre plea investigations and makes sentencing recommendations based on statutory mandates outlined in the Penal Code and rules of the court. We also staff three felony courts and several review courts each week. The remaining units and majority of the division staff provide various levels of community supervision for individuals placed on formal probation, those released from state prison on post-release community supervision, and those serving a portion of their local prison commitment here in our jail. All our officers also provide court coverage in those three felony courts and in the review courts as well. In 2018, pre-trial staff completed over 2,700 assessments utilizing the public safety assessment tool and decision-making framework to inform judicial decision for release or detention pending case disposition. Utilizing the least restrictive means necessary to ensure public safety and appearance in court, staff continued to monitor an unprecedented number of pre-trial defendants in the community, while continuing to keep a high safety rate of 92%, which means 92% did not reoffend. And this is while our population has increased by 215% since 2014. So you can see today, on June 20th, 2019, we probably have about 130 individuals that we're supervising on pre-trial. I want to talk a little bit about our adult caseloads. 27% of adult probation caseloads are considered specialized, meaning they have specific needs that require specialized interventions and training. For example, sex offenders require a different type of supervision, and that's known as the containment model. Domestic violence offenders have unique requirements to fulfill, such as the mandatory 52-week domestic violence class. Where we're struggling is really not in those specialized caseloads, but it's in all the other caseloads. Well, we have a lot of probationers that are assigned to the non-specialized caseloads who have multiple needs, yet we're not entirely able to properly serve them. Although, I'll talk about some new resources that our county will be receiving that would help in that. This photo was taken at the first-ever Santa Cruz County Employee Job Fair on May 22nd. You see my staff here doing a terrific job, speaking to the public about our work, and hopefully recruiting our next generation of probation staff. One of our strategic priorities in the probation department's 2016 to 21 strategic plan is staff development and engagement. Our goal is to attract, develop, and retain exemplary... Our goal is to attract, develop, and retain exemplary motivated and engaged staff. This goal nicely aligns with personnel objective number 52, which is talent acquisition. It's really great to see how our own department's plan really aligns and supports our counteroperational plan. Keeping new and current staff safe has always been of the utmost importance to the leadership team at probation. Over the past six years, we have a renewed focus of safety for all of our staff. One of the strategic priorities in the department's strategic plan was developing a field safety training program. This was accomplished in 2018 and led by our awesome line staff. Because of the excellent training and equipment our staff are issued and/or have access to, we have never had a probation staff seriously injured on the job. We are grateful for their safety each day, and our successful work with the Safety Committee continues to maintain these great outcomes. I want to take a moment and just share some of the equipment and training programs we've implemented and will be implementing in the upcoming year. Starting in fiscal year 1920, we'll start piloting a new TASER program for our probation officers. This will be rolled out after July 1. If approved in fiscal year 1920, we'll have a sheriff deputy embedded at our department to assist with special transports and special visits where backup may be required and help us increase necessary time. And through a tech grant from ISD, I want to thank ISD, we will be receiving 23 new radios that will replace some of the older ones that did not get signal as well, and we will also be purchasing three new radios to be installed in our vehicles. Over the past several months, we have kick-started our Medi-Cal Administrative Activities Claiming, which we believe can bring in substantial revenues for our county. This photo was taken by our probation team that attended a training in Los Angeles to help us refine our claiming efforts. The takeaway from my team was if LA can do it, so can we. At the probation department in LA, one division of 400 staff is bringing in approximately $4 million per year in MA, where Medi-Cal Administrative Activities Claiming. I want to thank our Health Services Director Mimi Hall and her staff for their technical assistance and investment in our department for expanding MA claiming. This past spring, the probation department was the lead applicant or partner in applying for and submitting three grant applications, and we are currently working on a fourth pretrial pilot program with the courts. I want to thank my team and partners for putting in the hard work to submit what I think were great proposals. I'm pleased to announce, and I think many of you know that, on June 13, the Board of State and Community Corrections awarded our county and the department two highly competitive grants: the Proposition 47 Grant Award of nearly $60 million for 3.7 years, and the Youth Reinvestment Grant for $1 million for 3.7 years. These grants totaling nearly $7 million will have a significant impact for our justice-involved individuals and also work to prevent young people from entering the juvenile justice system. But I do want to share with you that grants are funded differently. Five, 10 years ago, we could fund five, six probation officers. Now, in some cases, a minimal of 50%, 60%, 70%, even 90% of the dollars need to go to the communities that we fund. So this really helps provide services, but it's not really funding probation positions, which would have been great. We'll keep working on that. Take it away, Valerie.
All right. So I want to talk to you a little bit about what is going on in our juvenile division. And in, this picture depicts in April, we hosted Mexico. You'll find that work in our juvenile division is not constrained by borders. The excellent work of our staff and partners has been exported internationally. After we hosted the delegation, we learned from them that they had a lot of great takeaways to go back and implement and practice there, and we're really proud of that. The delegation learned from our staff, faculty, and community partners, that included the Watsonville PD, Community Action Board in Compass, Santa Cruz PD, and the County Office of Education. We are pleased to report that on July 2, we will be honored to host Lisa Hamilton, who's the new president of the Annie E. Casey Foundation. She will be here in Santa Cruz to learn about our juvenile justice reforms. In many ways, the trends in numbers and workload issues in the juvenile division and institution are opposite of what's going on in adult. And the juvenile services, our referrals to probation, admissions to the juvenile hall caseloads, and the number of youth sent to out-of-home placements has continued to decline, and we're proud of that. We've been a model site for two decades, a remarkable feat among all probation departments across the county, and our county should be proud of the fact that we have continued success and of how our staff has stayed ahead of the curve and set trends for the nation. We've also helped change the course of juvenile justice in many jurisdictions. While we didn't have a grand open or ribbon cutting for our yet-to-be-built juvenile hall or renovations, we do have a lot to celebrate, and it has to do with public safety, keeping kids safely in their community and out of the juvenile justice system, and more importantly, keeping them connected with their families, schools, and communities. Risk-based supervision efforts have helped to realize our department's strategic plan goal of effective supervision in the juvenile division. Goal 2.1 was to assess and cap caseload sizes to meet the best-practice caseload ratios. We're able to give more attention to young people and help them stay safely in the community. The dramatic drop in juvenile crime and arrest rates has also allowed us to focus on specialized cases. It should be noted that in December of 2017, there were 171 active clients on probation, and as can be seen by this graph, there were 28 fewer youth being supervised on probation in 2018, which represents a 16% decrease. With declining numbers, we've merged some caseloads and added an additional officer to help manage our child and family team meetings, which have greatly increased, and we believe we are right-sized in the juvenile division, and we're seeing the results because of that. We are well on our way to meeting our probation objective of number 165 of group homes by 2021. Probation will decrease the number of youth placed in short-term residential therapeutic programs, now known as STRTPs as a result of continuum of care reform, and that reduction is by 50% for juvenile justice-involved youth. And as you can see, our new placement orders have reduced by 77% since 2015. We're very proud of that. We are able to celebrate that fewer youth are sent to out-of-county group homes and far away from their loved ones. We are keeping youth closer to home, and this has a lot to do with our child and family team meetings, the alternative to out-of-home placement programs known as Fuerte. We sustain the program in partnership with In Compass and our partners at HSA. The child and family team meetings are really important because they've allowed the youth and families to have a stronger voice in the outcomes of their cases and more influence on supervision strategy. So they become partners in their own solutions and help to lead the way. It's also created an opportunity for probation staff to look at options other than out-of-home placement, which is illustrated by the results that we have in keeping kids in the community. Our department continues to stay ahead of the curve. Locally, we've already started envisioning our next steps and where we can make the greatest impacts in juvenile justice. This past year, we've begun to focus on prevention and education success for our South County students, and this has helped us start meeting Objective 166 of school outreach outlined in our operational plan. In this photo, we have probation staff, our partners from County Office of Education staff, and Children's Behavioral Health staff who are supporting our project with youth in school. In 2018, the probation department, in partnership with the Santa Cruz County Office of Education, came together to work on a pilot to enhance prevention opportunities for education success for students in South County. This pilot is a two-part project. It is social-emotional responses to student behaviors in order to support school retention and ensure the assessment of needs and provide services and interventions accordingly. The initial findings, we're proud to say, is determined that young people, after young people on probation were not earning high school credits or graduating at the rates of their peers in the county, the first quarter of 2018-19 school year indicated 143% increase in credits through this partnership compared to the first quarter results from one year ago. In the third quarter, the increase of credit accruals was 20%, so we jumped to a 203% increase in credit accruals. So we found that by addressing the root causes of students' behaviors and absences and engaging parents, we're able to retain students in school and increase their academic achievement.
So I would now ask you to approve the proposed budget for the probation department, including any supplemental materials as recommended by the county administrative officer. And this is the conclusion of my presentation, and I will take questions if there's time.
Sure. Well, first, I'll see if there's any public comment. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to us today on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for questions, comments, and action. So Supervisor Lee, pull.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the ongoing work that the department does to help keep our community safe and to use really good evidence-based practices that we can see now have produced the results that we wanted in the juvenile system, in which there was an early investment, and now with the adult system, trying to work harder to make that system work as well as possible. I'm very curious about the pretrial numbers and trying to get some sense of how many people in jail right now are there pretrial.
I think we're hovering at what the state average is, which is somewhere around 66% in pretrial. And I know, working with the sheriff to really make sure, drill down and make sure we're actually able to correctly and accurately identify that information. But so it's either, and with all the good efforts that we have with our pretrial services, there's still a number of people in there awaiting sentencing. And we know we have a number of cases, some, you know, that are in there three or four years. So that contributes to that. And some of the other stuff that I'm hoping that we'll look at more has to do with this pretrial pilot program grant through the Judicial Council, which the court is the primary applicant. We would partner with them, but that would really look at and inform and help, I don't want to say train the judges, but, you know, and really inform the judges of pretrial and how that works and develop a little more confidence in that, because as you know, there's probably 53% concurrence rate with the release recommendation. So we'd like that to be higher. That means more folks could be released. But I think we've got work to do on our end, and we'll work with the courts. This grant would be tremendous asset to our county. It could bring in anywhere from 1.4 million to 4 million. That's the amount that we qualify for with our court.
Yeah, well, I look forward to seeing if you can get that grant and the work with the judiciary. As we look at issues involving our jail facilities, when knowing that 2/3 of the people haven't been convicted of everything, and that with over a dozen years of data on our pretrial program and the success that it has shown, knowing that you could still get the judges to only agree to 53% of the recommendations, to me, there's a breakdown there. It creates a much, it creates lots of problems in the jail with the number of people that you have in there. I'm not sure it makes us any safer. One could argue it makes us less safe. And we're not working towards the rehabilitation necessary to ensure that we reduce recidivism. And it would be much wiser for us to invest in more pretrial probation staff, which is a lot less expensive than keeping someone in jail for two years before they stand trial. That would pay for itself just one person. So I think that we have to do more work in, you know, the sheriff's office, your office, the CAO's office, the judiciary, to figure out how we can increase those concurrent rates and reduce the number of people in jail who haven't been convicted of anything. And that, given the many-year history of 96% success rates where people show up for their court cases and don't commit crimes that are greater than the one that they were released on, we should have enough data to say that we could use a system that would have less impact on our county jail system, better impact in the community, and if we have enough staff to be able to manage that program, because I see the increase, that that's a much wiser investment for us than figuring out how to build a bigger jail. In regard to your operational goals, I think they're very good because they're broad and they cover all the different things that you do. The success that you've gotten with the, what do we call it, the cafes?
Cafe, the PRO-47 grant that's coordinating.
Yeah, we called that yet or not, that way. The cafes grant and the youth grant is fantastic. Your department does a great job of bringing additional money into our county. And while it's unfortunate that more of it can't go to hiring probation staff, the community partners that you fund hopefully take some pressure off staff in the future as we work to keep people out of the criminal justice system. And I appreciate the work that you've done in a leadership position with the Youth Violence Prevention Task Force. I think there's been great things that have come out of that. The new probation service center, hopefully will be renamed one day, but the probation service center, it's, I think that there are also some good opportunities there. And I'm kind of curious as to why only 10% do we think we use that?
Well, we looked at our overall.
Do other service centers like that in other communities see that kind of numbers?
So the programs that we visited, well, when you were developing this, you know, I'll said, when you open the doors, you're not going to get a stampede of people coming in. So it takes a little time and good advertising, you know, about the program. And maybe with a name change, that'd be more attractive, we'll see. But so that was part of it. So we didn't want to set up ourselves up for failure. But 10% was, 10% of our overall probation population, which I think today we have around 1,600 individuals on probation. So came to that number, anywhere between, you know, 150 and 200 people coming into the service center. And we can adjust that. But lessons learned from other programs that when you open the door, it's going to be a trickle possibly, because I've had a lot of experience in opening day treatment, evening center programs, and you have to advertise to your partners, to your court partners. Our judges are coming in doing a tour in a couple weeks, just for the judges, and a lot of other partners have scheduled that. So we're building up business, opening the doors, and I hope we have a stampede. Obviously, that's what we want.
Yeah. Offer free food, as it usually brings them in. I also appreciate your outreach to schools and that one of your goals is targeting schools. And you recently participated, or your staff recently participated, in an outreach we did with North County Schools to talk about mental health issues, the role that it plays with criminal justice, you know, to, it becomes incredibly important if we don't want someone to end up on your caseload to do that work early on. So I think your outreach to schools is very warranted. And the last thing I'll just say is, I really appreciate the work in reducing the number of kids placed in group homes outside the county. And I know that doesn't make them any better. It really breaks up the things that we know will make a difference in reducing recidivism, which is keeping them tied to a support network in their community, keeping them connected to their family if possible, keeping them in school. And so, as we do that work to keep on reducing that number is a worthwhile goal and will yield good public safety results. So I appreciate the work that you do every day, and I wish you great success with the remaining grants that you have out there.
Thank you. Thank you for the support.
One last thing I'll just say is, I want to specifically acknowledge Sarah Fletcher for her participation in the Justice in Gender Task Force. And there have been other probation staff that have participated on that task force when we've looked at the criminal justice system. But Sarah is there month after month and is a great participant and provides a lot of great information. So thank you for that.
And I want to let you know that we're incorporating a lot of what we've learned through that task force into our practices and even policies. And starting with our service center, we're developing a gender-specific type of programming there. So it's been very helpful work and gone a long way.
Yeah, thank you.
Welcome.
Supervisor Pearson?
Yeah, congratulations, Mr. Geraldo, for your success and everybody in the staff. It's really truly impressive, and I continue to be impressed by the continuous improvements that you've made. And I remember going back to Philadelphia with some of your staff to the Casey Foundation, a nationwide gathering that Santa Cruz County was at the center of how to get things done or how to do it. And very impressive, and you just have continued your efforts in that regard. It's somewhat phenomenal how many grants you get, and you see, you just keep coming in. And I know that there are some restrictions on those that you've just have received of almost $7 million, but that was very competitive, and I think it shows again how much stature you hold in the state and throughout this nation in addressing those who are in need of probation support. I think that to continue the objectives into next year is very impressive, but several objectives supporting youth in particular, the young who have already... objectives supporting youth in particular, the young who have already offended and then who are at risk. And to divide those up and see how you can really get to them and help them before they reoffend, number one, but don't offend in the first place, number two, but they're on that track. But I look forward to hearing more in your development of appropriate facilities that could provide those better services and how we can coordinate our efforts with the, with what's in the jail and so forth. And I think what you've done is outstanding to date and just keep up the good work.
Thank you. We will continue and we'll be sure to report back on the progress. These grants, it's one thing to put them together and all the thought and work that goes into them, but I always tell staff, as they know, the hard work begins when you've got to implement them and sort of take that, like movie script, and turn it into the movie.
Right.
So we've got a lot of hard work, but it's going to be very rewarding and beneficial. Thank you.
Sure.
How you doing?
Doing very well, thank you.
How about you?
Very well, thank you.
All right. Yeah, just a quick question. I don't think I ever asked you, but when I saw the, you know, equipment and everything that you do need, it says handcuffs. How often does, and when I say you, I mean your department.
Sure.
How often do you have to actually use handcuffs?
Fortunately, not very regularly, but we do. We make arrests.
Sure.
We have, we do, in the community, we have folks who are out of compliance and/or have a warrant status and they're agreeable to come and turn themselves in. So we do the arrest, put them in handcuffs, put them in a caged vehicle and transport them to the jail, in some instances juvenile hall. We have youth who are on alternatives to detention program with strictly, you know, house arrest and they're out of compliance, and we do effect arrests in those situations. So I don't know the statistics, but we do make arrests and we do.
Sure.
Use our handcuffs, but it's not, you know, 50% of the day, you know, spent doing that, but we do that.
Now, if somebody has violated their probation, do you, sometimes I guess you just tell them to turn themselves in?
Well, there's a continuum. We have to look at the severity of harm and the violation, really.
Sure.
How that's impacting the community victims and measure that against the need to put them in custody. So we have a continuum of responses. So it's a response grid to violations, because they're all different in nature. And so some responses which are severe enough, if there's someone on a domestic violence caseload who has a stayaway order, however, they're visiting that person or, you know, stalking them, that's a severe violation and that person probably would need to be, go into custody. But there's other violations that are not necessarily something that we would need to handle taking them to jail, but we can respond with appropriate interventions that would support different behavior. So it's a continuum of responses from really not that severe to severe, but we have a matrix that helps us decide. Because we want to be, all our probation officers, we would like them to respond similarly to the same violations.
I think what's interesting about your department and probation officers and the whole, you know, as a whole, is you actually, you know your client, I guess, but you also know their families, you know their history. It's a very personal job.
And thank you for acknowledging that. I think that's really a story that needs to be shared and heard, that we're with these clients for a long time. You know, you have the point of arrest, point of going to jail, prosecution, and most frequently probation, that's a commonly used sentencing. And then we have them for three years, five years, or more in some cases. And so we get to know them and everybody in that family and support. So we, in some ways, we become part of the family and you'd be surprised that when our probationers have life changes, children, they come to us first to tell us all the good news, because we've become, we've been that really consistent role model and figure and presence in their lives. So it's just my staff, it's, if you could spend some time with them and see what they do day in and day out, it's incredible.
Supervisor McPherson, I have one more question.
The recidivism rate, I think it's lower than the state or national average. And just briefly.
Yeah, we, well, last year, in 2018, we completed a recidivism study of our AB 109 population. In our, for instance, our two-year recidivism rate when compared to 12 other counties, and this is using the same methodology, and the state definition of recidivism was 39% at, 37% at two years, and to three years, it was 47%. And so, of course, that means people did reoffend and recidivated. Most of those were misdemeanors. So one of our goals is to really put in a process where we can annually remeasure that using the same measures that we have in place. So, and coincidentally, just today, the Public Policy Institute of California, I think it's PPIC, released a report. I haven't, I just looked at the summary initially and it talks about recidivism rate. We're not included in that study, but it's something everyone's interested in. But I do want to share, the recidivism is one way to measure success and it's important, but there's a lot of other things that we also want to look at in terms of client success as well. But we're working hard to keep, you know, obviously measuring recidivism.
All right. So thank you for your presentation today and for your work year-round. We've opened and closed public comment, so now it's time for a motion. Motion by McPherson, second by Leopold. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to our final presentation of the day. This is page, item number 49. Consider the 2019 proposed budgets for the Sheriff's Coroner as outlined in the reference budget documents and schedule the continuing agreements list items for final approval on last day of budget hearings on June 25th, 2019, as outlined in a memorandum of the Sheriff's Coroner.
Good morning, Chair Coonan, Department of Supervisors, Jim Hart, Sheriff's Coroner. And I just want to start out by letting you know who's here today. Our Administrative Services Manager, Kathy Samzecita, next to me. She's, she and her team work daily in our budget and she's the most intimate with it. And then my Law Enforcement Chief, Mitch Medina, is here. My Corrections Chief, Jeremy Verenski, and then also my Under Sheriff, Craig Wilson, is here as well. And so before I get started on my comments, I do want to acknowledge the work that we do with the CAO's Office and Carlos Placios and our analyst, Melody Serrano. And I just really appreciate the relationship that we have and the ability to negotiate some of these tough budgets and get things figured out. And I really appreciate the way that we work together, so thank you to them. Today, I want to talk to you about a few things. I want to talk to you about our crime rates. I want, we're going to talk a little bit about accomplishments, budget overview, and then some highlights in the 19 to 21 budget, as well as how our budget aligns with the strategic plan for the county. So obviously, law enforcement fire is a very expensive endeavor and it's something the taxpayers pay a lot of money for. And when you're running a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation, we cost four times what a normal county department's going to cost, because we have to have that many personnel covering a large geographical area. And so I just want to give you an idea of what some of the return for dollars is on this. And the first slide I want to share with you is our crime rates. And I was looking back at annual reports dating back to the '70s that were written by Al Noren's administration, and the crime rate in Santa Cruz County in 1975 was 52 crimes per 1,000 people. 52 crimes per 1,000 people. And those are the good old days that people want. They pine for the good old days, right? I grew up here. People want, you know, back then, they could let their kids roam free and do all these things, but there was 52 crimes per 1,000 people in Santa Cruz County in the unincorporated area. And so when you look at this chart, you can see before prison realignment, we were sitting at about 27 crimes per 1,000 residents. And then after realignment, it declined by a third, down to about 17, and it's remained relatively flat. It ticked up a little bit after Prop 47 hit, but it's flattened out to about 15, 16 crimes per 1,000 residents. And that's both property crime and violent crime. Moving on to our homicide rates, as you guys, you guys have all been around a long time. In the '70s, Santa Cruz was known as the murder capital of America. We move into the '80s, you can see that in this chart, our homicides in unincorporated Santa Cruz County, not counting the cities. This is unincorporated Santa Cruz County. From '84 to '88, we had 51 killings in that five-year period. That is a lot of homicides for a county our size for about, well, now it's 140,000 residents. Back then, I think it was less than 100,000 residents. And then it dropped down to, the next five-year period was 30, and then it leveled out over the next 20 years to about, an average of about 18 homicides for every five years. And then you can see from 2014 to 2018, we've dropped down to four. That's a remarkable number. And you're talking about a 90% reduction of homicides from the '80s to where we're at present day. And moving on to the next, oops, we didn't get that in there. There's another slide that I wanted to share with you that I'll just briefly mention, is that our overall crime rate is half of the average of the state of California. State of California overall crime rate is at 30 and we're at 15. And so I think these are numbers that we should be really happy with. We certainly haven't eradicated crime in Santa Cruz County, but we're doing pretty well. And it's really hard to determine what's causing this lowering of the crime, whether it's, there's been so many legislative and voter-approved initiatives over the last 10 years, between prison realignment, Prop 47, Prop 57, Prop 64, and then a bunch of legislative changes. It's hard to put your finger on what's, on what's making this decline, but we're seeing it on the juvenile side and we're seeing it on the adult side. And so since we can't really pinpoint, I'm just going to claim that it's outstanding work by the Sheriff's Office. As far as.
This is, I have it on a disk, would you like to?
Yeah, this is out of.
This is that. You didn't load the one.
Okay. Well, we'll just stick with this, Kathy, it's fine. So as far as some accomplishments, in 1819, it's already been mentioned that we located the, or opened the Aptos Public Safety Center, which is a joint venture with District Attorney Probation and Supervisor Friend. And that was a, it's going to be, it's really a great location. It's in the heart of Aptos and I think it's going to be of great service to the Aptos community. Further accomplishments in 1819, we continue to provide two 24-hour sessions a year to Sheriff's Office employees, as well as all law enforcement in Santa Cruz County for crisis intervention team training. And we have about 60% of our corrections and operations staff is now trained in crisis intervention team training. And with the amount of mental health calls for service that we're experiencing right now, somewhere between eight or 10 a day for people in serious mental health crisis, just in the county, not counting the cities, this training is probably very beneficial for our staff and for the community. We're also providing ICAT training, which is Integrated Communications Assessment and Tactics Training. And what this training talks about, and it's, we've done five or six 10-hour blocks of this for our patrol staff, and what this training talks about is how to deal with somebody who has a weapon that's not a gun and bring that case to a successful resolution. And we're seeing these cases over and over and over in patrol. Baseball bats, knives, swords, axes, rocks, that our people are being confronted with. And we have to figure out ways, using time, distance, cover, communication skills, to successfully resolve those cases, and we are. We've also implemented body-warrant cameras in corrections, so now every frontline staff member, whether you're working in patrol or you're working in our jails, is wearing a body-warrant camera. And there's very specific rules on how that camera's used and how that evidence is stored and how long it's stored. But we're doing somewhere in the neighborhood of 5,000 to 6,000 video segments a month right now. And during critical cases, whether they're occurring in the jail or out in the community, that body-warrant camera evidence is telling us a lot about what happened on that particular call. We've also, have started our focused intervention team, which is funded with Measure G dollars that was passed in the November election for the half-cent sales tax. And that team is doing quite well. There's been a lot of early successes, they're running a full caseload. We have three personnel from the Sheriff's Office on it. We're also partnering with county mental health and they're providing three of their personnel. And we're out in the community dealing with high-volume call, high-volume users of the judicial system and people who just refuse to get treatment. And so far, that team's going well. We've also embedded a manager and two detectives into the cannabis compliance unit. And there's been a number of cases that have been publicized locally about what this team is doing. And they're really going after the bad actors and the people that are causing environmental damages, the people that are laundering money, the people that are shipping large quantities of marijuana to other states, as well as people who have firearms. And we've located a lot of firearms during some of these illegal grow operations that our people are coming across. We've also increased medical services out at Roundtree. We opened up the rehabilitation and reentry facility last year, and now we have 150 men on that campus. And so there was a need to expand medical coverage and we were able to do that in the 1819 budget. And then we're at the end of about year two of a four-year process to get our lab certified to process DNA evidence. And this has a lot of value to the local justice system. I think I mentioned to you last year, but it takes the Department of Justice on a priority case, say a sexual assault case or a homicide case, about eight to 12 weeks to get a return on DNA evidence. And with our own lab, we'll be able to turn that evidence around in about two days. And that's going to, that's going to get the violator off the street quicker. It's going to bring closure to the survivor of that crime and it's going to provide better evidence to the courts and for the district attorney. And so in this current budget cycle, we were able to create a lab director position, which was filled. And then behind that, we were able to get a lab manager position filled. And then I'll talk about it in a moment, as far as what we're doing moving forward with some more personnel. And then we're in the accreditation process for our Coroner's Division through the International Association of Coroners and Medical Examiners. And our coroner's unit will be accredited within the next six to 12 months. Just a brief budget overview. You can see our revenues are up, as are expenditures, and I'll talk about that in a moment. And our total funded staffing allocation for 1920 is going to be about 358 employees. So our revenues primarily through 172 money, as well as AB 109 dollars, is coming in around $31 million this year. Our total expenditure is about $85 million. The 1920 budget calls for a status quo in most of the other areas, including overtime, training, services and supplies. We are asking for a few items to increase security, particularly around drug use and smuggling into our jail system. And I do want to provide you some photos, just from a case that had occurred two days ago. Thank you.
No, watch out.
And so drugs are coming into our facilities three ways. They're coming in at intake. So if somebody is brought into the main jail by an arresting agency, it could be any of the police departments, it could be the probation department, but somebody's arrested, they come into our facilities and they have drugs concealed in a body cavity. And the photographs that you're looking at, or the photograph that you're looking at, there was two ounces of heroin and methamphetamine, marijuana, tobacco, and hypodermic syringes that were taken from a person's body cavity two days ago. Those drugs would have eventually made it into our general housing unit. We had a person bring in two ounces of methamphetamine about a month and a half ago, and it caused multiple overdoses. It caused one woman to have open-heart surgery because she used a lot of it. And those medical expenses are all being paid by us as taxpayers. So we really have to work on increasing our security around drug abuse inside our jails. And so besides intake, drugs are coming in through the mail, and that's a very small amount of drugs. And then they're coming in through contact visits. We have contact visits at our Roundtree facility and at DeBlaine Street facility. And so we could easily say, okay, we've got a drug problem, we're just going to end contact visits, but that's not, that's not what's best or the right thing to do. We have to allow our lower-level incarcerated people to have contact visits with their children and loved ones. So with that, to combat the intake challenge that we're having, we're going to lease a body scanner. And they're in many California prisons and county jails, and it's much like what you see at the airport. And so when somebody comes into the main jail and they're going to go through the intake process, they're going to walk through this body scanner. And we have a very strict draft policy on data storage, who has the right to view that information, as well as when that body scanner will be used. But we believe that that's going to prevent a lot of the drugs coming in at intake. This budget also calls for the hiring of an additional correctional officer and a canine, which will be a Labrador drug-sniffing dog. We already have one of those in our patrol team, it's very effective. And so during contact visits and also that animal would be used on cell searches and some other things. But I believe just the presence of having a dog at the family visits will deter people from even trying to bring drugs into the jail system. And so we're looking at this as a three-pronged approach. The mail, each item, a mail gets searched and gone through, but these folks are clever and they have ways of getting it in. So. of getting it in. So but that's where we're going to be upgrading our, some of our security, our correctional facilities. We're also, this budget asks to bring on an additional sexual assault detective to work on inmate-related sexual assaults that are reported in our jail system. As far as continued progress with DNA certification, this budget is asking to fund two DNA criminalists mid-year. And those DNA criminals will help us start establishing some of the protocols and procedures and continue our certification process. They will also begin working on prepping DNA samples that get sent to DOJ that will improve the turnaround time from the Department of Justice. Currently, as far as inmate dental goes, we only provide dental services at the main jail. So if there's somebody at Roundtree who needs dental services, we have to transport that person down to the main jail. And so we're going to be, or we're asking to expand dental services out to the Roundtree facility. We're in year two of a complete replacement on our handheld radios. Those radios have aged out, and the radio shop is no longer able to work on them. And so we're going to be completing the replacement of those. And then something you don't really think about, but when you're cooking or producing 2,000 meals a day inside our jail facilities, we have industrial kitchens at two locations and industrial equipment. And some of this equipment is over 30 years old, and it needs replacement. So this budget is calling to replace some of the items that need to be replaced. As far as how our operational goals align with the county strategic plan... Where'd that go? Okay, I don't have that. So under operational excellence, we are working with the CIO's office and the probation department about trying to identify existing facilities and assets that the county owns that we could use in creating a all-women's jail facility. And I think this is something that the county's going to have to address at some point, whether it's this year, five years from now, or 10 years from now. It's going to have to be addressed. We currently have two women's housing units in what's essentially an all-male jail. And there's a lot of operational things that can go along with that. And so the best practice is to have a women's facility that women go to from intake to booking to pre-trial to post-adjudication to release. And so that's an area that we're going to be examining, see if there's some things that we can do on that, and to examine what sort of financing we can find for something like that. We're also looking at increasing our medical services, and then what we talked about, the DNA and the coroner's piece. As far as comprehensive health and safety goals, the Sheriff's Office is always partnering with local communities. We have seven substations throughout the county. We have to invest in our facilities, and our main jail is really at a point where it's aging out. It is, it's at the end of life. And so it takes a lot of money, time, and effort to keep that facility going. And then, of course, investing in our own employee safety equipment to reduce injuries is always a priority. And our staff is going to be, or at least a part of our staff, is going to be going to a different type of uniform this year that's a carrier, that takes a lot of the weight off backs because we do suffer a lot of back injuries due to the duty belt weighing about 20 pounds and the constant wear and tear on our people's backs. So we're going to transfer some of that weight to the shoulders, and we'll be purchasing equipment for that. So that's, those are the items that I wanted to talk about. And I'm asking that the board approve this proposed budget for the Sheriff's Office, including all supplemental material as recommended by the county administrative officer. And I'm happy to answer any questions or listening comments you might have.
Okay. Supervisor Leopold?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the ongoing work of you and all the staff in the Sheriff's Office. I'm fortunate enough to have an office at the Sheriff Administration Building. I get to see a lot of activity that goes on there, people being, there are people coming in and getting help, and the trainings that go on on a regular basis, and just the ongoing day-to-day work. So it's very impressive. And I, the operational goals that you have, I think, are good. You and I have talked about the facilities, and I hope that we'll take advantage of things like either the task force on justice and gender, or the jail overcrowding task force, or some other things to take a look at the issues that you bring up around facilities, because I think they're really important. And I hope you would also be willing to participate in the discussion that I brought up with Ms. Geraldo about trying to figure out whether there are people that we're holding in our jails who don't necessarily need to be there and would help relieve some of the capacity issues that are in our county jails right now. In regards to the, one of the goals around the DNA laboratory, I'm wondering whether it's going to help us, one of the concerns that is regularly brought up to me is what's going on with our SART program, and that people have to go outside the county, and do we have, will this help us bring that, all that work back here?
Well, UnderSheriff Wilson has been assigned to, on the SART piece of it. So if I could have him just say a few comments about where we're at with that. We are in a transition period where they will be coming back over. The DNA lab will certainly expedite cases where we're not sure if, who the suspect is, or if there's some question as to who the suspect is. Because we'll be, if we are able to collect DNA evidence during a SART exam, we'll be able to process that very rapidly. But if, the UnderSheriff could comment on where we're at with that?
Good afternoon, Craig Wilson. We're very interested in getting this SART program for adults returned back to Santa Cruz County. We've been in discussions with Valley Medical Center, that operates a program there, for almost about 18 months now. And we're at a point where we believe that during the fall of this year, that adult services return to Santa Cruz County through our partner Dominican, on-site at Dominican. And we've been working through some MOUs and agreements to bring this to fruition. So with any luck, by the end of the year, we'll be back in service.
That'd be great. I mean, I think people are very sensitive to the fact that women who have gone through this violation have got to go outside the county to get services. I know you care about it. You told me about it, and it's great to see those plans reaching fruition, to have it back here in Santa Cruz County. So thank you for your work there. The other thing I wanted to just talk to you about, it's not part of your budget, but I know that you have both been helpful in the community and been a leader in the state on issues involving immigrants. When, in February 2017, when there was raids, and there was a lot of concern in the community, you were right there, sending an important message to all members of the community that you don't look at the job of the Sheriff's Department to do immigration. And I know your support at SB 54 was also an incredible leadership position. And the, you know, the President tweeted just a couple days ago that they're going to try to arrest millions of people. And I'm wondering, from the perspective of the work that you do, is there anything that we should be doing or supporting you in doing when it comes to that kind of threat that's out there in the community?
Well, I can say this. Despite the national rhetoric, I believe that all the county chiefs, because I meet with them monthly as well as myself, are committed to holding on to the same position that we've been holding on to for a couple of years now. And that is that local law enforcement will not entangle themselves with immigration services. And so, of course, we can't prevent them from coming into our jurisdictions and do whatever it is that they do. In some regards, I believe it's good to have somebody there, so that at the local level, we can observe what's going on. But we've made some promises that we will stay away from that. And so there will be no change in a local law enforcement's response. But beyond that, I don't have any great ideas on what other things we can do to prevent any problems here. I did get some word out through the news, I believe it was yesterday, because there was some fear in the community after hearing the President talk like that. And so I was able to get on a couple of local TV stations to try to reassure the community that we were not going to be participating, nor any of the local police departments.
Well, I appreciate that constant efforts to share that message. And I think the continued partnering with the community, so people see the Sheriff's Department as their partner rather than their adversary, I think goes a long way in terms of building community and let everybody know in the community that they're going to be represented and protected by the Sheriff's Office. Thank you for your work. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Supervisor Christian?
Yeah, I just want to thank you and your team leadership and everybody in the department for your continuing service to provide public safety. I think the most important charge that we have as county supervisors or on any level of government. And I know that I've thanked you time and again, but I can't thank you, I want to thank you once more for opening the service centers in the 5th District in Felton and Boulder Creek. It has been so well-received. People feel so much better. And I think it has, and the deputies and the volunteers who staff that center too, so welcoming. And I want to thank them, the volunteers, as well. And I think, you were talking about the crime rate going down. I think that part of it might be just the visibility, per se, that you're there in the communities. And people think, well, you know, maybe this is, it'll take five minutes and not five hours to get up here to do something, to respond. But I think in the patrol, I'm not sure if I have the numbers right, but you're in the high 50s now, and in the recession period, it was in the high 30s or something.
Yeah. And it's really interesting. We've opened a lot of substations over the years, and I've received the most positive feedback about the Boulder Creek substation. The folks up there are just so pleased with having that local presence. It's been a real good relationship with that community.
Yeah, it's been, thank you very much. And I think similar to my comments on the facilities for youth offenders, the facilities we use to incarcerate adults, both women and men, we really need to review that. Because I think what the jail has, just 319 beds or something, and you've got a population of almost 600 or something at times, don't you over there?
Yeah, so there's 319 beds in there, and we have, today, we have about 380. Last week, we had about 420 people in there. So we're about 25% overcapacity.
Yeah. Well, it's something I know that you were going to take a look at, and I really do appreciate that. And I really, as I've said with some other departments here too, the dialogue, the sheriff, the chief probation officer, who's still here to make sure he hears what you have to say, I guess. But that you're just having, you know, really the best use of our facilities. And, you know, there's, the juvenile hall maybe is not being used quite as much. I think that just a review of this whole situation needs to be, I know it's going to be reviewed, but I think it's time to do so. But thank you for everything and everybody in your office.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Caput?
Thank you. I asked the DA already, so pretty much, do you agree with the response that he had when your balancing act that you have to do with maybe cooperating with ICE or not? You know, you have such a tough job when it comes to that, because if you turn a blind eye, and then that person that they're looking for, you know, commits a big crime. And then, of course, the other side would be all the innocent people that are drawn into all the drama of somebody being pursued by ICE.
Yeah. Yeah. And really, when somebody comes in on serious charges, ultimately, they're going to get deported at the state level, right? They're going to go to state prison eventually, and then ICE will pick them up once they serve their sentence. And so, you know, could some, could a serious offender slip through the gap somehow, possibly? But really, I think we have a pretty solid system in place here in Santa Cruz County to prevent that from occurring.
Sure. And then with the jail population and anything that goes wrong, you're under a lot of scrutiny from a lot of people. And, you know, how difficult is that for you to, you know, have to deal with? Because you're talking about, how many inmates, were you saying?
Today, system-wide, with all four facilities, we're at about 550 inmates.
I know.
And so we're way overcapacity, our staff. We don't get to staff up when we have 100 people over. We still have the same staffing levels. And so we're asking much more of them. They've been on mandatory overtime for two years, so they're working a lot of shifts. And so, you know, it's a challenge. And what I've found now, this is my fifth year as being the sheriff, is that we really have very little control as to who comes and goes out of that jail. It's really a function of the courts and the district attorney, the public defender, and the probation department and parole. We get orders to hold somebody, and we hold them. If we can release them on electronic monitoring or through Sheriff SOAR, we do that. But it's really, there's, when it takes five years for a homicide case to go to trial, and we have, right now, we have 20% of our population's pre-trial two years or more. And there's this huge stopgap in the corpse system, and there's continuance after continuance after continuance. That trickles down to us, where we're feeling the impact of the slow processes in the judicial system. But we're feeling it severely in the jail.
You bet. And then with the mental health training, how's that going?
On the crisis intervention team training, it's going great. It's a really solid program. It's something that we partner with County Mental Health on to develop a 24-hour course that is certified by the Police Officer Standard and Training, which is the state commission that oversees all police. So it's a certified course, and I think our people are learning a lot. And we're, what they're learning about is when they see behaviors by somebody who's experienced a mental illness, they're learning how to interpret that behavior and what it really means. And so it's rather than perceived, it's, okay, I just, I know what that person is doing. I know why they're doing it. And I think it's reducing use-of-force cases, and it's reducing errors that could be made during high-stress situations.
You bet. Yeah, that adds, you know, now you're more like, you're, you have such a varied job. You have to be tough in certain situations, and then in other situations, you might be able to be like a counselor. And that's really rough. And then you throw in body cameras. With body cameras, is it making your job more difficult? Because with that, it's kind of, in a way, it's good for both sides when there's a disagreement. But there's no room for, oops, I made a mistake, I guess, with the body camera. You know what I mean?
Yeah, and I think everybody behaves better when they're on camera. And so I think we're seeing that. And if a mistake's made, we acknowledge it, learn from it, and move on. But the body-worn camera gives people like myself, it gives police administrators a really good idea of what's going on on some of these cases that get questioned by the community. And I can't think of any other job that we ask an employee to put a camera on and film everything that you do.
I agree.
It's a very unique position to be in. And yet, our staff embraced it, and they wanted those cameras, because they see those cameras as protecting them, because we're so spread out. We're covering 450 square miles. So like, right now, we have one deputy on duty for every 50 square miles of this county. And so a lot of the contacts and a lot of the interactions they have is one-on-one. And so then we get complaints, and it's this, he said, he said, he said, she said. Well, the camera answers a lot of those questions now that really protect our staff and shows exactly what occurred.
Yeah. You don't have to have them on, like, when you're going to get a break or having a cup of coffee.
That's correct. We do not turn those on.
That's good. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So just very briefly, I'm dismayed to hear that people are more grateful in Boulder Creek than they are in Davenport, because they're really grateful in Davenport and the North Coast for the deputy up there. It's made a big difference on both some pretty significant crime and then just sort of quality-of-life, low-level crime that's going on up there. So I appreciate the efforts, and the proactive efforts especially, to coordinate with other agencies and try to be a presence up there. And then the FIT, I just want to appreciate both the voters, you, and county health for the FIT team. We had a population of people that were just falling through the cracks over and over and over again, and having a disproportionate impact on our community. They're the most challenging population to work with. And I think we're seeing some initial good results, and I look forward to working with you. And because this is new, and because this is a uniquely challenging population, don't hesitate to let us know how we can help, assist, where are other resources that would make a difference in the efforts that we can do, because it's just an important one, because it's one that just... one that just drives people crazy, has huge community impacts, and people are really suffering.
It does, and, and I'm looking forward to, to looking at the ASR review and, and the report that they'll generate, that might call out some strengths or weaknesses, there's some areas where we can make some adjustments, so I, I think we are in about year, or, excuse me, a month five of the FIT team, so I think once a little time passes by, and we can evaluate data and really figure out what it is that's working or not working.
Okay, great. Now's the time for public comment, I don't know if probation staff wants to come up and comment on the Sheriff's budget, all good, okay. Anyone else would like to comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board for action. Motion by McPherson, second by Friend, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to the deputies. We will now recess to our continued budget hearings at 1:30 on Tuesday, June 25th, for our last day budget hearings, and then, and before that, we'll have a 9:00 AM Board of Supervisors meeting, which will be our regular meeting on June 25th, here at 9:00 AM in the, in the, in the county chambers.